Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Martha was unable unexpectedly to be with us tonight. So, yeah, she had a little situation and she's getting it figured out, but she wishes she could be here and put me in charge, so bear with me on things like Robert's rules. And feel free to let me know when I've messed that part up. So, we are going to begin with public to be heard on items not on the agenda, and thank you all for joining us. Sure? Okay. And, yep, and can you say your name for the record?
Yep. I just have one question. How many minutes do I have?
The agenda's pretty full. I think we had a historic precedent.
We haven't. I mean, we try to stay in our timeframe, but so there's five minutes for both, but we could extend that some.
Okay. So, I just have something that I wrote.
Do you want a microphone?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Sandra Chitden. I'm a ninth grader at Landmark High School in Massachusetts and a fourth grader at Fleming. I'm here to talk to you about the equity of students who have dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia. You have probably heard these terms, but most people don't quite know about dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia are. I will mostly be speaking about dyslexia. People believe it is when someone reverses their letters, reads backwards. That is not the case. That is a myth. The Yale Center for Dyslexia and Creativity, as well as the International Dyslexia Association, define dyslexia as an unexpected difficulty in reading in relation to an individual's higher level of intelligence. While those with dyslexia are slow readers, they are also, paradoxically, are often very fast, creative, and out-of-the-box thinkers. Dyslexia is a difficulty appreciating the individual's sounds in spoken language. It affects a person's ability to rapidly retrieve the word he or she wants to say, to isolate the sounds with a spoken word, and then attach the appropriate letter to the sound. Those with dyslexia struggle to read fluently, spell words correctly, and to learn a second language. The Yale Center for Dyslexia believes that dyslexia affects about 20% of the American population. The National Institutes of Health believe it affects 15 to 17 of Americans. One in every five students have dyslexia. Eighty percent of SLDs in reading are children with dyslexia. Using these statistics, a school district like EWSD has 4,500 students. Approximately 900 students would have dyslexia. In 2017, our child count for SLD was 135 students. Without knowing the approximate number within 135 students who have been identified as SLD for reading, it is clear that the Child Fine Mindate is not being implemented in our district the way the U.S. Department of Education intended for it to be implemented. These kids tend to have an above-average or an average intelligence. They want desperately to read and be like all of the other students. In return, improper intervention, wait-to-fail model, and non-identification of dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia result in children developing mental health, behavioral, substance abuse, suicide, and it keeps the school-to-gill pipeline alive and very present within our community. According to the National Institute of Health and Human Development in the U.S., 60% of people learn to read reasonably well, no matter the instructional method. 20% struggle to learn and never read with ease or fluency. They don't read for pleasure. They fall steadily behind in fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension strategies. 20% of people read below the fourth grade level. That last number is shocking to me. If you are an adult reading below a fourth grade level, how do you graduate on a fourth grade level? How are you career and college ready? How would you be able to maintain in the workforce? How do you support your family? How would this be considered equity for all students? According to a study done with the University of Texas Medical Branch and the Texas Department of Corrections, 48% of prisoners are dyslexic. In the U.K., researchers found that 53% of their prison population is dyslexic. According to the National Institute of Child Health and Human Development, reading problems identified in third grade and beyond require considerable intervention 16 times more than they would in K through second grade. Children simply do not outgrow reading problems. Seventy-four percent of children identified as a specific learning disability in third grade remain disabled readers in ninth grade. These statistics are staggering to me as a parent to children with dyslexia. They are frightening. No child should get into the ninth grade and not be able to read on grade level, or at least close to it. When my son entered ninth grade at Landmark, he was reading below a fourth grade reading level in all areas of the essential components of reading. Landmark specializes in these language-based learning disabilities. He has made some great academic gains. This has been at the expense of having to be away from his family, his friends, and community. That isn't fair to him or my family. So, what can we do to help these kids? First, we need to identify these kids as early as possible. Research has proven over and over again that early identification and early intervention is the key to boosting literacy across the board. The Yale Center for Dyslexia has developed an early screening test called the Shavitz Dyslexia Screen. It can be given to children in kindergarten and first grade. It takes about five minutes, and it costs 99 cents per student. This test will show you if a child is more likely to struggle to read and if they have dyslexic tendencies. Again, using EWSD as an example, with about 900 students needing screening, it would be slightly under 900 in costs. The next step is helping these kids is early intervention. Early intervention can prevent failure and is up to six times faster and more successful than later attempts to remediate. Research proven instruction that is explicit, intensive, systematic, multisensory, diagnostic, and prescriptive. Orton-Gillingham does offer a more intense intervention specifically designed for dyslexic students. This mythology hits all the areas mentioned above. It would be helpful not only as a more direct, intensive, and early intervention, but also for those older students who are still struggling to read today. It needs to be done with fidelity from an associate-level instructor for 50 to 60 minutes a day. The simple fact is that educating these kids costs more money than the average student. More spent on man-hours, accommodations, technology, staff, and training. As we all know, money talks. The earlier you identify and intervene with these students, the less money it will cost the district. When you have high school kids who read below a fourth grade level, you have spent money on man-hours, technology, accommodations, and possibly extra staff that are not doing enough because the student is not reading on a level to succeed at life. Students that are more likely to -- these students are more likely to end up in prison. So, the money has essentially been wasted. We can't go back in time and identify students like these earlys, but we -- early. But we can start now by teaching them the way that they need to be taught using the main mythology like Lips, Orton-Gillingham, and a box-like program. Wilson Reading Instruction needs to be given by a Level 1 or higher instructor in order to provide fidelity of the program. A three-day training course only gives an overview of the program and isn't intended to be used as a proper training to give the program with fidelity per Wilson. I've heard people say, "Why is it so important to teach these kids the way that they need to be taught? Why should we care about dyslexics?" Dyslexics are important to our world and our way of life. Do you use an iPhone or an iPad? Steve Jobs was dyslexic. Think about, he revolutionized the world of computers. Can you imagine your life without them? Many have probably heard of Virgin Mobile, Virgin Atlantic, and Virgin Music. We wouldn't have these companies without Richard Branson, a severe dyslexic. Celebrity chief Jamie Oliver said in an interview that he did not read a book for pleasure until he was 38 years old because of dyslexia, and reading was just too hard for him. Dyslexic people are important. They think differently than those who don't have it. They see the world differently. Different is good. We need to embrace these students and help them achieve literacy success. By helping these kids achieve literacy success, we help our school district with their vision of equity and in turn make our community more successful. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Sandra. [applause] And others to be heard on items not on the agenda.
So, I'm Jessica Saros.
I'm Jennifer Laterno. We're the co-presidents of the Essex Westford Education Association. And we are here to present you with signatures in --
To a letter.
To a letter that communicate some of the concerns we have about the statewide healthcare situation. And we are really here to present you with the signatures and a summary of the comparisons. We're not sure how much you guys are even in the loop from the VSBA about it, so we really want to make sure that you guys are aware because what the union had, what the state has in their proposal is really, really scary. Now, granted, we all know in negotiations that proposals are meant to be, you know, worked towards the middle. Like, we understand that, but there are so many things that they have in there that don't account for the differences between different job families. And their proposal has in it that teachers would contribute the same as support staff. And the way that we have it now, we've enjoyed a very productive, positive negotiation process for so many years, both in the current and former districts. And we have accounted for and been reflective of the difference in pay and standards, and these proposals don't have any of that in it. And we're really scared for the tenor of the current healthcare situation, and we know that you guys are in a good place to advocate because to what it seems like is to them, we're just a number. And we know to you guys, we are people who have lives. We teach your children. And we hope that with our message today that you're, in whatever capacity, are able to advocate for the employees of EWSD. Would you have anything to add?
The only thing I would add to what Jess said is, you know, aside from the difference in the proposals, the negotiations really haven't been the kind of negotiations that we're used to enjoying with you guys. You know, we maybe enjoy it like the right verb.
Aside from --
But, you know, we've had with you and our former member districts respectful, productive negotiations, and we just don't feel like that's happening. We feel like roadblocks are being put up. There isn't really, you know, honest, open dialogue trying to find a --
What's stopping this?
A middle ground.
Really childish, really.
Yeah. So, we're very concerned. We're joined here by many of our colleagues tonight, teachers and support staff that are also very concerned, just to really convey to you our level of concern. So, we'll give this to you.
What we did is we had people in different buildings and areas sign. So, the letters are all the same, but the signatures come from hundreds of employees throughout the district.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Your days are long, so thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
[laughing]
I know. I know. Have a good evening. So, I think, I'm not exactly sure which part I was supposed to do this, but I would like to move the student report up on the agenda. Grace has a concert, right? Am I getting that right? A performance? And we'll need to leave, I can't remember what time.
Like around seven?
Yeah, soon. So, if we, if it's okay, I'd like to even move it before the consent items. Is that agreeable to all? Okay. We don't need to vote for that, right? No, thank you. Told you, please me, folks. So, I'm going to turn it over then to Grace and to Laura to share with us their, what probably will be their maybe final report for the year.
You guys, just before I'm off to bed. Can I start?
Okay.
So, Grace and I and Kim went to Fleming on Friday, May 31st. So, we visited Fleming and talked to the fourth and fifth graders in the student council. We shared with them the roles and responsibilities of a student rep and the process for becoming one. They then shared their plastic bag initiative, and we talked about their favorite part of being in student council and/or a student at Fleming. We watched their student council in action as they discussed the designs for the new playground structure and talked about the ways to improve their family-style lunchtime experience. Overall, we really enjoyed watching the tight-knit group of students represent their classes and voice their opinions. Next year, we hope that it will be possible for student reps to visit the elementary schools in the district and visit CVU or BHS.
Yeah, we tried to get that going this year, and it was kind of hard just because we realized that, like, in the middle of the year, and then people got really busy with their schedules. But personally, I really enjoyed the visit to Fleming. The kids were just so amazing, and they had such great ideas, and I loved watching them, like, talk to each other, and they were respectful, so that was super awesome. Yeah. Do you want to talk about the second one?
Sure. So, we have our new student representative. We're really excited.
Yay!
It's Tilly. So, next week, Grace and I want to meet with her. We're working on a day and time so we can talk about our experiences on the board, talk to her about what she hopes to make happen for next year, kind of go over a couple things. And we're hoping that she can come watch our last meeting before the end of the year so she can kind of come, like, meet you guys and get a feel of what the meetings look like.
Yeah. She's in my Gov class, and I think she's a great fit for this just because she's so thoughtful, and she's always, like, super well informed about everything, so I think we should all be excited.
She works really hard. Yeah, we're really excited, so.
Really excited, yes. Yeah, and this is unfortunately my last meeting because I'm not going to be here on the 25th. I'm going to be in DC, but we just felt like it was kind of important to reflect on the positive things that we've gotten done this year. So, the first thing that we had in our list, this is like not in chronological order, but we just kind of updated the process for choosing a student rep, like, changing the questions so that kids are passionate about giving answers to them and that they're not just questions that people BS. Getting rid of the names on, like, the applications so we're not judging people by, like, who they know or, like, who they're related to. And we kind of started the tradition of visiting schools in EWSD. Like, Laura's been to EMS. We've both been to Fleming and ADL, and we've been to Westford, too. And then I was able to reach out to Mr. Riordan and give one-on-one feedback for PLPs, and that was super awesome because it was really like a way for us to connect and, like, usually, like, when I see Mr. Riordan in the hallway, like, he's like a friendly guy, but I don't really know, like, what he's thinking, and it's just, like, super awesome to know that we're on the same page and that he really cares about the students. And then, like, this kind of seems like it's a negative, like, we discovered a lack of trust between students and teachers, but I think it's ultimately good because now we know what the problem is, so we know how to solve that. Because if we didn't, if we didn't know what the problem was, like, then it'd be kind of hard to, like, make student experiences better. And then, we also made the student rep role known more to school. Like, in some of my classes, teachers have asked me to kind of just, like, in a very casual way, like, talk to my friends about what I do on the board. And we've also done some stuff with the Instagram, the Student Gov Instagram, so hopefully that will continue next year. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I think that was awesome.
Okay, cool. Yeah, any questions?
I want to thank you, Grace, for both of you, but really for helping us move this student board rep position forward. You guys have been patient. You've been thoughtful in providing feedback. You've helped us all learn, and I think Liz and I grow in knowing how best to help support you as mentors. So, I love that you've thought bigger and more structurally and what can help it be even better moving forward so voice also has empowerment with it. So, I think we are all very grateful for your commitment to that. We think Dartmouth is really lucky to get you, and we're going to give you your card after because we thought you were coming late. Oh! And so...
We do have something small for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. [applause] You're not going far enough away that we can't find you.
Yeah. Can I just add one thing?
Yes, please.
This is something I talked with Martha about earlier. I thought in the past, a year or two ago, we had the opportunity to congratulate an Essex Higher CTE student who was nominated for Presidential Scholar, and Grace actually won, so I thought we should be sure to congratulate her, so.
You know, it was a wonderful honor to me.
Yes, and you will be missed. Your leadership has been outstanding since we met you, and your commitment to this school and this community and to making it better is just, it's just incredible, and we thank you and we will miss you, and please don't be a stranger. Come, come visit us. You know where to find us.
Here. I'll be on nights for a while. I wanted to thank you guys because, like, you guys are always so responsive on the group chat, and you guys are just such great role models for Laura and I. Like, you guys don't back down, you know, just when something gets scary, and that's just such an amazing thing, and you guys are such amazing mentors. So, thank you so much for guiding us.
Thank you, ladies. And hopefully we'll get a little brainstorming time to make sure that that which especially Liz and I might do to help support orientation with a new student, we can think about together what we could've, should've, would've done that would've been helpful for you guys and what we did that you want to make sure we don't forget to do for the next rounds. So, every year will get that much better, but thank you for helping us get through. And I wish we were enjoying your concert. So, feel free to leave whenever you need to.
Okay.
And now, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda, and is there anything that needs to be removed or anyone would like to remove for discussion?
I just had a question on something, so I don't know if that means it needs to be removed or...
I think technically it might need to be removed, so is that, do you want to?
Yeah, just the contract extension.
Sure. So, we'll, I'll hear a motion to remove contract extension.
Extension.
Transportation contract extension from the consent agenda. Do you want to make that motion?
You can remove it by deleting the entire computer.
And, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So, we're going to remove that from the consent agenda. We'll handle that in a minute. Can we, right? Okay. Thank you, guys. And otherwise, is somebody willing to make a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda items? Thank you. Do you want to read it?
Well, I take it back.
Traditionally, the clerk read it, and then somebody made the motion.
Yeah, traditionally, Myla did the whole thing.
I know. So, I move that the board approve school board minutes from May 14th, the warrants, the leave, the resignation, professional appointments, and...
And I can read through those.
The names.
Agreed. Because they're not on the agenda.
This is a, yeah, that one doesn't have to be called. This one is the resignation.
So, I'll read through the resignation and professional appointments, if that's agreeable to everybody. And did you get to the last bullet, approved board chair and clerk to sign?
And approved board chair and clerk to sign professional employee contracts.
Okay. And the resignations are as follows. Amy Cole, Director of Curriculum, effective 6/30/19. We have a retirement. David Brodeghem, EHS Driver's Ed Teacher, effective 6/30/19. Professional appointments recommended. Lisa Pikulski, School Psychologist. I apologize for the names. Pre-K-12 District Office. Stephanie Murray, Special Educator Learning Specialist at Hiawatha. Katherine Cooper, Math Science Teacher at ADL. Dave Lambert, Driver's Ed Teacher, EHS. Corey Sellers, School Counselor at Fleming. Rebecca Nowak, Music Teacher at Westford. In each of these cases, there are predecessors. These positions are replacing someone either on leave or retiring.
Was there a name attached to the leave?
I believe that that was the retirement. Is that correct? Or was there separately?
No, there's, there was not a leave actually for that. We put it on there because we thought we would have one, but it didn't.
Okay. All right. So, I have a motion. Are we all set to vote on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. And now, we'll take up the bullet of transportation contract extension.
Sure. My question was, under the board notes, it talks about the parameters under which a contract that was originally bid can be extended, but doesn't tell us how the contract extension actually meets at. So, I'm wondering, what is the cost of the contract extension and how does it meet those parameters?
Costs, the cost can't go up more than the New England Price Index, which is 2.7, and the AOE releases that. Or if there's additional services, it can't extend 30% from its original. In our cases, the services, this is the fifth year of the contract, and the services are the same as originally bid, so the costs are going up 2.7. There is an additional cost because we do need a Lyft bus to be on the Georgia route now, which is a change in the original bid specifications, so there's a small charge to that, but it's meeting IEP needs and so forth, so.
What is the total cost?
The total cost for the daily transportation routes is 61,472, and then for extracurricular, that works on a driver's rate of $30.39 per hour and a mileage rate of $2.34 per mile, depending upon bus type, so that's for bus one. For type-two buses, it would be $2.23 per mile.
But you have that costed out as what do you expect the potential total cost to be?
Yeah, that fits within our budget, the FY '20 budget that we had anticipated because we had increased the budget by approximately 3%. So, it should. We battle with extracurricular, and right now, we're on a cap for this contract, so this is making available eight runs for athletics, and we are finding that we're using vans and other things right now that are also budgeted, but it's the supply and demand for extracurricular and co-curricular athletic transportation is, it's outpacing the supply right now.
Can you just remind me what that cost is, the total, what was in the budget?
I can look that up. I don't have, I didn't, I didn't anticipate the question, so I didn't have the data ahead of time.
Ryan?
Yep.
Explain between the difference, bus one and bus two?
They're the size of the bus, so...
Bus one is a traditional bus?
The bus one would be a traditional 77-passenger bus, of course, depending upon age of student because that's counting three per seat. High school would be a seat and a half per person, and then bus two is the shorter bus.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the question is whether, and it sounds as though it falls both within the budget and within the allowable increase if we are interested in extending the contract to provide these services. Is that, am I getting that right, Ryan?
Yep.
That that's what we're asking the board to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to take a vote? Are you good, Todd?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes. What is, what are we, nine and a half?
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half, I'm sorry. Eight and a half, zero. Wow. All right. So, we are moving on and behind schedule, but I'm just noting that because I think we're getting into some pretty important conversation, and I want us to be mindful of time but also fully engaged around the topic, and I want to pass it off, I believe. Are you going to lead this part of the discussion around?
Sure. The student data needs for goal and measurable outcome monitoring. We began that conversation, I believe, in looking at this chart of what folks know to be in our, in our learning together, know to be some available information and ideas, but I think the hope is that we provide some guidance so we know what you want to look at for data.
Yeah. So, I'm thinking as, I'm not sure how best to have this be helpful to you guys. I don't know if we want to identify areas we feel, what would be helpful to you.
Well, I know that we discussed in our agenda planning that it should be around the measurable outcomes, but also, I mean, we can provide other data. It would be good to know what data you want to see so that we can bring the appropriate data to you.
I'm wondering, because this is, I guess, it's hard to know what we have available as information, so I'm...
We didn't get to that part of the conversation.
Yeah. So, maybe if, since we didn't get to that earlier, that's something that could help inform this part of the conversation, and I think one thing I would recognize is that there has been data provided around third and fourth grade academic data.
Yep.
And so, if we could maybe focus on those areas and age groups where we've not seen data yet this year and provide you whatever guidance we might based on what you tell us might be out there.
Yep.
And I'm happy to, it looks like Haley and Patrick may have questions or thoughts. And I'm happy to, looks like Kili and Patrick may have questions or thoughts.
Do you want to do that? Martha usually calls on people.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to do it?
I mean, I, we can just...
I usually take the lead from that.
Oh, man, thank you for the reminder. I really much prefer sitting someplace else. But let me ask Kili where, for some thoughts.
I think that this is a great starting point and makes it a lot clearer to me what sort of measures there are for these measurable outcomes. And a column that I would love to see added to this is a date. So for instance, if every year the youth risk behavior survey happens in October, it would be useful to know that I could expect to see that sometime after October. But asking for it in June is not gonna get me very fresh information.
Yep. We also have VSAC data that we just received. And, um, I had an email out, cause it seems like we have data from two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen. So I'm not sure if it's every other year, but it was newer data than I had seen before. So I haven't dove into it, but it has some of the college and career readiness on it. So that's another point that...
Knowing when these things are available or like when they're theoretically and actually available.
Right. Right. Thanks.
And Patrick?
Um, I think my key ones, and I think ones that we're, you know, clearly using as measurable outcomes are, is going to be both the reading, uh, at the end of third grade level and the whole number proficiency by the end of fourth grade. Um, I think having, and I've mentioned this before, so I'll reiterate it. Um, having our start point where we are now, um, you know, to provide a baseline for our improvement year over year, I think it's gonna be, you know, great information to have. Um, and what I'd also like to see is something that has been missing to an extent is going to be what sort of, uh, what sort of progress we have getting made amongst minority students. Um, not just at, looking at a snapshot from year to year, like say for example, you know, third grade one year and then third grade the next year, but being able to see, or is there gonna be a way to track those students going up, right? Cause if we know half in third grade, you know, how are we going to be sort of continually tracking the improvements?
Correct. And we can do that district wide, not necessarily school because our numbers get lower, um, too small. But Erin just, uh, created a recent report for the equity grant that that, um, I've been thinking would be great to share at the, the end of the, that June twenty-fifth meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
Other thoughts?
Yes, I just had a couple of points. I assume that all students are receiving grades and, uh, quarterly reports. For about the last fifteen, twenty years, I mean, we've had regular quantitative, uh, reports on a timely basis that covered, uh, how we did according to the state and how we've done according to other schools in Chittenden County. Taking those, I haven't seen any to a large degree that detailed data. But I think by grade, by subject, uh, and including a population, the free and reduced, and having that as a baseline for the quantitative data is imperative for the board to be able to measure that progress is being made. That being said, um... I guess I'd like to hear some explanations as to why the board cannot receive that data.
So let me clarify your question. So you want to see grade level data?
By subject.
By subject. So that would come from data points that we would have. So we have a reading assessment and a math.
Science.
Assessment. But see, so many of those, if you want report card data, we can give you that. But you're looking for assessments and we have been, now we have pretty consistent, we have consistent assessments across the district, K eight or K five even more so than, um, six through eight. But that's the kind of things that we're working on as we merged, so we haven't had that data to give to you. We do have the data in the younger grades right now and that's why we shared that with you in January.
So we don't have any local assessments for K, K six to twelve?
We have a reading assessment that is, um, six through twelve that we can share.
I think the board needs to think about this because this is important to be able to measure.
I agree.
And measure progress over time. And it looks to me like this is, with the soft skills, it looks like a five-year process plus, plus. If, if the staff can be fully trained over the next five years. That's a long time. So for the expenditures that, that that district is making, I mean, we need some evidence that progress is being made, so.
I think that anything that we compared against the state and, and peer schools was most likely Sback. Was most likely a, we, we've never been able to take a local, uh, reading assessment. There just isn't, we don't have that data available to us at a statewide level. We use Sback to compare ourselves. So maybe you're speaking of those times where the boards have looked at Sback data and compared it to Chittenden County schools and the state?
Well, yes, we've used that. Uh, we've also used local data too.
We can look at local data locally, but we don't have, there isn't access. I mean, even for a while, there wasn't access for the high school to look at the local data of the town. So we certainly can't look at aspirational's or peer schools. But the local data should give us a, a thicker tapestry of what's happening, how's it going? What's the growth, rather than a high stakes singular test where there...
Could, could you present to the board, uh, a few, you know, a few charts about what is available? What format it's in, uh, so that we can start a dialogue in that area?
Yes.
And I think, um, so Sback being a single data point, is there no, has there been no reported Sback data all year? In grades six through twelve?
Well, they just took the Sback. They just took the data this spring. So when we looked at data in the fall, we haven't, now we'll get the data from the spring to compare to last fall.
And we saw the aspect data in the fall for what grades?
You, I'm pretty sure you saw all grades. And then we zeroed in on fourth and, third and fourth as local assessment. Because those were in our measurable outcomes and...
Right.
So now, um, we have, some part of our systems did not have a consistent reading assessment or math assessment. And now they do, we do, which is new. So when you look at new data, let's say we look at third grade new data, the teachers were also learning it. So it's not, it's, can be skewed until we, you know, look at that data and make sure the training is done and all of that. So that's, that's a difficult part when you have a new assessment come out.
The main thing I want to make sure is that we have a consistent agreement about what needs to be presented.
Yep.
That we can receive it on a regular basis. And we can make some determination as to progress or lack thereof.
Right, right.
And put an action plan in place if necessary.
Right.
And I, I guess I would also ask if we are absent Sback data reported cause we're not gonna have that information till the spring. Um, and they were just given to ninth graders, right?
Right.
So that's a shift this year.
Right.
Um, so that would be anticipated potentially in the fall because I assume we won't have that.
We should have it. It seems to come earlier and earlier every year.
But it won't be coming before the twenty-fifth of June.
No.
So that, bearing that in mind, um, Brian mentioned that there may be local data in those grades six through twelve that create a tapestry that is far more rich than any single data point that I couldn't agree more. So I guess having this data in context is important. And so if there are other things that can be access to share what we are seeing or know of our middle schooler and high school kids. We've just not had data at those, six through twelve is half our district.
Right.
So I think, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but if you know what data is accessible for that purpose, we could react to it and you can tell us if...
We have reading data and we can, we can do that.
Okay.
Yep.
And do we have anything else regarding math or, um...
We don't have a consistent math. Um, six, seven, eight should.
I would say any place where you can drill into quantitative data around our student experience around academic participation would be helpful. And so if it's not that we have like A grade or a single assessment for math in the high school, perhaps there's those participating at different levels or how many kids did APs? Or what is the demographic of those taking advantage of APs look like? Would get to an equity question, I think. I think, and what is that relative to the general population? So I'm just trying to think about our vision and our, and our measurable outcomes and think a little creatively around things we might have.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's, 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 Kili.
Um, when you start talking about APs, I think also a relevant data point is the stuff like industry credentials from CTE.
Right.
And in between those two, um, what percentage of our students are taking ACTs, SATs and subject tests? And getting like average or above scores on them or scores that would get them admitted to Vermont colleges, you know?
I wonder, and I, I saw you, Patrick.
No, no.
I'm just thinking about the requirement, cause I got that email from Rob telling me about all the things that have to happen for them to graduate. One of them being a required survey. I got all excited. I thought it was like the student exit survey that Grace was thinking about or the equity survey. I thought it was any number of things. I didn't realize it was a Naviance survey. So that, I don't know what that is. Abby didn't mention it. I know she's done it cause she wants to graduate. But I'm wondering what data that captures for those who are college bound and those who are not college bound? And to what extent that can be shared with us because they'll have to have completed it, I think, by, I don't know, one of these Fridays. And that would seem like enough time to capture whatever's in there. So that seems like another set of info.
But the equity survey will, that data will be ready to share on...
Yeah. Yeah. So that will be really exciting and interesting. I'm just knowing that there's something that is a, you must do it or you don't graduate. And I don't know exactly what's in it, but it must speak to minimally college readiness. If not, I hope it speaks to career in college. And not just for college bound kids. But Patrick, sorry to jump in on that.
Um, I'm actually gonna ask for some help, cause I'm not really sure how to phrase this one. But since we are introducing the social emotional coaches, I'm wondering if we would be good to get a baseline and also be looking at disciplinary data to see if that gets improved year to year with the addition. Um, not really sure, you know, again, how to sort of look at disciplinary data, like, you know, if it's the number of students who are suspended or detention or...
Yeah, we did share some of that data, like office referrals, the ones that we were keeping track of for, but...
I think it, those are, those are the elements that we're looking for. I think at the board level, you're trying to, again, what's the data that reflects allegiance to policy and to the overall goals, right? So, you know, we would probably be apt to talk about what is a variation of discipline from year to year. However, if we do that and the board wants to see every discipline by every category, then we disappoint. So it's just that, that sense of like trying to really nail, I mean, some of these elements that we're talking about, again, are really good curiosity elements, but we want to try to trace those back to, okay, what's that goal? What's that policy that we're trying to, to create the evidence around? Um, and they, I'm not saying that there's been anything that's been said. I'm just saying that that's the mindset of what are we, what are we looking for as we're trying to pull the, pull the different threads? And, and how can we get sticky? How can we get a presentation that happened on October sixteenth continue to be present for us, rather than having that hunger? You know, we could go back into that presentation and say, what about this didn't resonate with the board? That it, that six months later, it's as if it didn't happen. You know, that's the, because I think some of it is, is that it's trying to hit eleven people. So it, you know, it, it may have just kind of blown by you and it was like, that's not really what I want. But we spent six months not clarifying what's really gonna resonate and why.
So tonight is about...
Yes.
Yeah.
I wonder, does anybody have any other thoughts on that topic specifically? Uh, only, um, I'm thinking to Patrick's point, um, like student discipline data probably has a demographic face to it as well, and that is being looked at all over the state and disciplinary referrals related to one's demographic, um, information. And that, I think, is probably accessible. You probably even report it out to the state.
Yeah, we do have to report.
So I'm thinking if there are data points that you are reporting out to the state on topics like this, that potentially... I think, um, was it Grace who said it earlier? Like until we identify the information, we don't know if we're looking at a problem or how we grow or move from that. And we just haven't seen it in that context yet. So that's ma- maybe what you're talking about, Patrick, or among the line of thinking that would align with our vision.
Yeah, I mean, right. That's why I'm kind of, you know, searching for a good way to, to phrase it.
And I think it would help us understand as well, you know, these pockets of restorative practice is not a consistent deliverable on discipline. And so if we're noticing that pockets of extra referrals or no resolution or teachers not feeling respected because they're going back, like, I'm not even sure how that cap, would be captured. But some of it probably is just data we have, cause we have to report it right now, which lends itself to more questions about how do we get to sort of the bigger conversation around those ideas so that we can imagine that we're delivering discipline in a consistent manner in a district? Kili?
Um, to try to help with phrasing this and connecting it to the different ways that we're looking at this issue, I think, um, what Patrick is talking about speaks to measurable outcome number three. Specifically the responsibility and accountability parts. And we as a board have attempted to address that by supporting the investment in social emotional learning. So we want to develop a baseline with whatever data points you think are relevant to how social emotional learning supports measurable outcome number three. For example, disciplinary referrals came up a lot in the discussions leading up to it. And you would then track those data points as a result. So, um, does that kind of help to...
We also have to remember, like the assessment that we'll use. So part of doing the social and emotional learning is first instruction. It's not, I think we do a pretty good job with tier two and tier three with disciplinary, with restorative practices and other things we do. Um, it's really about that first instruction. So that's what we have to try to capture to see that change.
Looking at equity...
And then the others should go down.
Looking at equity, both in terms of disciplinary outcomes for different demographics across the whole district and for like if there's differences among classrooms, that they're all moving in the same direction of fostering responsibility and accountability instead of lots of referrals.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Diane. In, in, in line of, of student experiences and culture, do we want to look at absentee day, absenteeism as a point in, in dealing with our culture and the, uh, SEL things? And that kids are essentially checking out versus checking in? Um, the reason I mentioned that, I was just reading Parent Magazine about kids not dealing with things by saying they have a stomach ache. Um, well, they're dealing with it. They're saying, I don't want to be there today because something's not right. Um, so I'm kind of looking at, you know, well, kids are people. And they'll say, I'm, I'm checking out today. Um, I, I need a mental health day. My stomach hurts. I'm gonna stay home. So, you know, if, if something's not going right, we might see more absenteeism. So I'm wondering if that's a, a data point that we want to look at? If how is that might relate to, since we have not done the climate culture, um, survey yet, uh, if that might give us an insight in how that coordinates with some of the other data points that we're looking at?
We can look at it and see if it would give us information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems like a discrete data point that's easy to access.
It's easy to access. I just don't, yeah.
And if it is, it certainly could be provided...
We can make lots of assumptions by looking at it.
On an individual basis, it's, it's one of the key...
On an individual basis, it's, it's one of the key risk factors, right? But on a global basis, it's, it may be hard to assess out.
Right.
You know, what, what something might be, whether it's a high vacation period or.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's worth looking at.
Well, it may be relevant. It may not be. I, I just.
It's a key data point that we track to talk about participation in school lunches. Because we have to grab that against the eligible. And if you're not here, you're not eligible. So it could be data that you might just start to see in a regular quarterly basis through reports on food service. Which I want to start to introduce participation, uh, and break that down.
And then.
So looking at measurable outcome number three, um, I'm wondering, you know, for a lot of years, there was a really strong emphasis on anti-bullying efforts. And I don't know kind of where that sort of is now in the.
The thinking or the daily mindset around schools, but it, I'm wondering if data that relates to bullying, um, and any of that data that we may have collected or work we may have done in the schools would relate to outcome number three.
Yep.
And that's another one that's reported to the state, right?
It is.
Anyone else? So, um, do you have any other questions for us, Patrick?
I don't think so.
We've thrown enough at you.
I have a page and a half full.
I guess that's a little bit as I'm thinking about sort of the next meeting of agenda planning and. And timing and the extent of this work when we would see sort of ends reporting, it would often go over two meetings. And we don't have two meetings left for this. Um, so I'm wondering, especially on those data that are available, if perhaps the report itself includes the data that's available that we've talked about tonight. But maybe the presentation is at a higher level, but we get the depth. Is that? I'm just trying to figure out how we put, so even if they're not, um, even if we don't talk about all, whatever of these.
I can't, we can't do that in a meeting.
I think there are.
No, neither can I prepare it for the meeting.
Age groups that we've not, um, that we've not addressed. But there are discrete points we've asked about.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, um, in terms of the equity, uh, survey.
Yep.
That, 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 that issue has been such a high level. Um, has, has been such a high level of visibility with the board. And it, I don't know if the data will be ready and an interpretation of that data will be ready for the next meeting. But it seems like that could be the focus of almost an entire meeting.
I think that survey data and along with the data that we submitted with the grant would be great equity data to look at. And looking at achievement gaps and.
Well, in terms of some of the baseline information that Patrick mentions, like that, to me, that would be like a good.
Remember it's available?
The report will be available based on the five different areas of the continuous improvement plan. And you will see a series of pie charts that represent both for faculty, staff, and then also students. A series of questions that would lead to that area. And so you'll be able to consume data, uh, based on that. I think, you know, the other conversation is about how we disaggregate data to be meaningful. Which I think is what that is referring to in reference to the data that we submitted to the agency of education and the equity literacy grant submission. So those will both be available. And I, I, I do think that it's deep and it will take some time to think through some of that. It begs the question about how much you can consume.
Right.
Versus talking about like what structure you wanted in or what kind of disaggregation generally, right? Those are sort of two different conversations. Here's the data. Or these are the points we really wanted to kind of figure out.
Would it be reasonable to perhaps consider the data that's reported to the state? You guys give us that, like whatever goes to the state on bullying, on. I know there are other discrete data points that go to the state. We report up a bunch of stuff. As one sort of da- data dump for us almost. And then the first impressions from the equity survey. And then if there's space to go a little deeper on other things. I'm wondering if that's a start with the expectation that we can enter the school year. Unless there's something compelling that we really need to dive into in our retreat? That we come back to unpacking the equity piece. But minimally, we would get the data the state's getting on our students at a pre-K twelve lens. Just a thought, thinking, and if we've got time for more, maybe we do more.
Is this in three weeks from now?
Yeah. Because that, we're already reporting some of this, like bullying incidences and.
I don't know, um, I don't know the date that that data is due, but. I'm thinking it's June thirty. I'm thinking it's the end of June, but I can see, I will find that out.
Yeah.
I know I signed off of them at the end of June.
Last year, that'd be the information we haven't had yet.
Right.
So we, I'd love for us to be able to start somewhere as a place to start.
So I just have a question. So in the previous districts, is that data that you looked at?
Bullying incidences, we did.
Bullying incidences.
Well, at least in Essex Town, we had a treatment of students and families monitoring report. And the bullying data came into that. And there was other data that came into that. And, and the ends reporting included a lot of integrated data.
Yes, that would, that would for the town, but I wasn't sure the other.
So I just, I don't know.
CCS, you looked at it also. That's what I was trying to find out. Okay.
Can I just, uh, there are like a million data points that go up to the state.
Yeah.
Just as we start to talk about the.
I think it's around the discipline.
Of information that goes to the state through the SLBS system, used to be the service data set. And so we'll need to think about how to present.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that amount and in, in which pieces, so.
Yeah, and maybe we'll have a chance. I mean, we don't have that in front of us tonight to sort of say, oh, this one really is the equity. Like this is evidence around an equity lens because it's demographics around discipline. Like I just know it's spoken about at the statewide level, so it must be something we're reporting somewhere. And it's, it becomes sort of the driver for some of the work that happens when there's disproportionate, um, discipline happening in certain demographic groups. So I, maybe if that's the lens that's put on the data that goes up in seeing how that could be evidence for each of these. But we just don't know what those are and you guys do. So, um, does that feel like it hits the mark for what would be a great starting place?
I would agree. Thank you.
Okay.
Not asking too much, just.
I know.
For you to go through the telephone book of data.
I forget when our agenda planning is, but it is on my calendar. So this time. So we'll, we'll, you know, even if that's stuff that you guys want to send us and we can think about before the agenda planning meeting, maybe. All right. Are we good on that? All right. So moving along to the board-directed community engagement, next steps, and I think that that's a list.
That is a list. A list. So a couple of things. First, thank you all for, um, really diving into this at that engagement. We talked about this already, but it was a real win that we all did that. And we owe, uh, the participants and ourselves a little bit of talking about that. So that's what we're doing tonight. What, the way that we designed that, this was to have your teams come up with, with the themes that you identified. I sent out today, um, what Todd and Keely came up with as a, as a way to, that we could talk about this tonight. So maybe we could start with you guys, if that's okay, with physical, with, uh, physical integration. And just what I'm hoping that is the pairs or individuals, if your partner isn't here. We'll just share those big picture themes, um, of what you guys talked about and what really stood out from you in those conversations. The second instruction for you all was to just consider whether it was a board or an admin or a community thing. I'd like you to be thinking about that while you're sharing your themes, but we'll circle back to that or around, around that. I wanted to just mention that we came out of the retreat with some things that the board really needed to work on as well. Now we have another set of things that board and community members are interested in working on. So I, I'm hoping that we will come to a place where we can get our priorities clear and our communications team can then figure out, okay, this is what the board really wants in terms of engagement and, and what the community seems to want as well. And we're gonna work together to figure out how to make those engagements meaningful for the board and for the community. Does that make sense? Okay, great. So, uh, Keely and Todd, Keely?
Keely did all the work.
Okay. Great. So if you wouldn't mind, Keely, physical, we'll start with physical integration then.
Team grade.
Yeah, so, um, we looked over all of our comments and, um, tried to theme them. I think, um, the themes that I identified fell into a couple of different categories. Like you could break it down different ways. Like some of these were things that were building level feedback, like a specific positive or negative comment or a suggestion for how things are done at one building in our district. Some of them were operations level suggestions, like having an activities bus is useful for this or that thing. And then others, um, for physical integration, um, where it was like really on a topic. Dealt with things like diversity, inclusion, um, support services, staffing, student voice. Homeschool communication was a popular one and extracurricular access. Most of the things that came up in our group would require the administration to make any changes. A few of them would also require the support of the board, like anything that had to do with staffing. I code it as admin slash board because we have to approve budget for staffing. And then a few were about the community. And I think those particularly seemed to overlap with student voice. Things like what do students choose to access? You know, that's an issue not just in schools, but also out of schools. When you make an opportunity available, who chooses to access it? So, did anyone have any questions about the column of comments that we got about physical integration? Or suggestions for us? Does that cover what?
Yeah, that's great. That's great. And just for a procedure, then when you, if you could all send me what you're, uh, saying out loud tonight, then I will put it into, compile it into one, um, a one pager that we can share. So you already did that, but everyone else to follow. If you want to send it to me, we can. Perfect. Thanks, Keely. Um, Pat, do you want to go next?
Sure.
Grace isn't here, but you guys, I know you, Matt.
Yeah, Grace and I emailed back and forth and I was probably a little bit more specific, um, when I was doing it.
In your area, please. Sorry.
Yeah, um, so the two questions we asked, uh, teachers have high expectations for me. They believe in me and my abilities. And students are encouraged to take on challenging classes, project and activities. Which was, I don't even have the.
It doesn't matter.
Book in front of me. So apologies. But we did, uh, identify some really, I think, specific themes. Then I had a few at the end that came up multiple times, but maybe not as prevalent as the first ones. Specifically, um, I've experienced good flexibility in course opportunities and feel challenged by my teachers. Was a statement that, um, we got quite a bit, nine separate mentions of that. And that one, I was impressed that that was the highest and the one that was most prevalent. But then after that, it kind of rapidly devolved into complaints. Which, you know, it certainly is good, but, um, I, I think it did identify maybe some areas that might need work. There were five different suggestions around the idea that there are some barriers that students have in signing up for more challenging courses. When we know that we're trying to, you know, get the students, you know, specifically into coursework that is going to be challenging. There was mentioned that, you know, some courses required specific teacher recommendation letters if they wanted to take them. But they weren't just free to, you know, try to take something that was more challenging, that there were specific barriers in place that they were maybe interested in something, but that they didn't feel that they could access that particular class, even if there was interest around it. Teachers have high expectations from students that they in particular have good relationships with. And this was another theme that came up a bit under, um, that there were first impressions, both good and bad, have a powerful impact on student teacher relationships. Which is that, you know, if someone had a really good relationship with a particular teacher of theirs, that they were more likely to succeed in that class. But in instances where even if it was an immediate, right off the bat, first day of school, bad interaction, that some students that we talked to felt that, that consistently over the course of the year seemed to have a negative impact over their, uh, relationship with teachers. And that they didn't feel that the teacher was in that case, um, challenging them or expecting that they were going to do, you know, great things in their class.
Relationships are important.
Yep. Let's see. And then the trailing ones, um, there were some, uh, multiple suggestions that not all teachers necessarily know how to accommodate students, um, with specific needs. Some students felt like if they did have, uh, a need or a challenge, that they weren't really sure how to approach their teachers about getting help with it. And, uh, the last, uh, students did not feel encouraged or necessarily know how to advocate for themselves. And I think kind of paired that, you know, if they're in class, they feel kind of lost about who they should go to if they are having trouble. Or, you know, what the path would be for them to, um, you know, sort of get assistance, um, in what they're learning. Yeah, I think all the other ones are really just like, kind of like, you know, one or two off suggestions. But those were the big key themes that we picked out.
Great. Thanks. So that was opportunity to learn.
Yeah.
Kim, do you want to go? Kim and Al have instructional excellence.
I'll start and then I'll let you jump in, Al. We had a few questions. Our biggest chunk of question was, um, I, students are encouraged to demonstrate commitment, perseverance and flexibility, especially in challenging situations. That was our first question, which after our first round became our second question because it was harder to unpack for people to get the conversation going. Teachers notice and meet students' individual instructional needs. And then we had a third question, which I think we got two with maybe one group. But I, students understand what is required to be successful in each of my classes. So among the, the themes that came out is that their connections really matter, which I think others have spoken about. And when they feel that connection with their teachers, they, um, feel as though they can go deeper in all these areas. They feel seen and heard and react and respond to that accordingly. This is definitely not consistent for all learners. That came out loud and clear among those sitting there. And I think was more challenging for those with students who are not traditional learners. We, we tend to do a really good job, um, with students who are traditional learners. And I think that, um, individualized instruction is a strength for some educators and maybe not for all. And that is a challenge, whether it's the range of traditional learners or those especially with less traditional learning styles. And, um, that was not experienced consistently. I think that, uh, not all folks felt as though they were encouraged to be part of, um, advanced classes. In advanced classes, they did feel as though they were often stretched to be challenged. And things like test corrections aren't consistent. So if that's a good idea because it demonstrates proficiency, then it should it be happening consistently? If not across subject, which people had thought was being done consistently across science. And then we learned from a different parent or student that they didn't think that that was the case in their class. So, so I'm not even sure where we think there's consistency that there is, but it's definitely inconsistent, at least across the high school, about whether or not test corrections are valued, handled, done or not. That was a particular, um, I think, uh, I'm trying to look at our notes here, Al. We certainly, and, and we've heard about dyslexia as well, but we heard about that actually, and I think almost every group that passed through our conversation. in I think almost every group that passed through our conversation. And I think, what am I missing, Al? I feel like there was a bigger idea that, oh, I am seeing one note in here, that the K through eight experience is more dynamic and creative, and at least one parent's reflection was that the high school is outdated books and methods, so it might be much older books, might be less engaged methods of instruction. Was this parents' experience, noticed a big difference between K eight and when they got to the high school? And part of that may be age appropriate, but that was that parent's takeaway from the experience. Okay, but us?
I think the experience of a number of parents was that the kids really enjoyed the high school environment, the ability to choose to have this, the whole range of these different subjects and areas they can investigate, big plus. On the other hand, even within families, there was a wide variation in the experience at the high school level, hence, for different children. And it was as if, why is there such a gulf between these two? Dyslexia, I didn't realize how large of a problem that can be for these learners. And I think, I think Kim nailed it in that meeting, was that we need to be looking at the credentials of new hires for experience in college with dyslexic children, and that the state may need to change certifications criteria in this area. So that was a big one. Also heard variations in special ed. As parents became much more knowledgeable about special ed responsibilities and requirements of federal, state, then they saw areas where we weren't complying completely. That's hard to say, and I know it's a judgment call, and every circumstance is different. So I can appreciate that, but it's something that we need to go back and look at because we need to. The grading differences that I heard were in AP courses, that it was a big delta in second chances that were given in AP courses that are not available to students in other courses. And not sure why we don't have a level playing field, but there was one parent that explained to us that when their child got to college and were taking advanced courses, they were not given that second chance, and nearly failed out of their college courses because they thought it was the norm. Well, it's not, not the norm in other courses. So I think we need to have a conversation about a level playing field. We're going to do it, do it for all or do it for none?
And whether or not that's a, like, that wouldn't be a level that I would imagine is a board conversation, but rather understanding that there's, as I think of it, Al, I don't, I think it's an important conversation to be happening, that there would be consistency if you're taking the same course around standards and expectations, that if test corrections allow demonstration of proficiency, that students also understand best first effort is what the world is going to expect of you. And so whatever, I don't even, anyway, nonetheless, to sort of, to work with that challenge of expectations when they get outside of the high school and allow for growth and learning versus it's a seventy and you're done, who cares what you didn't know, or it's a fifty and you're, I think that, I think we heard both sides of that. Basically, the lack of consistency is the piece that is especially challenging.
The reason for PLCs is to become more consistent.
Yeah.
Have opportunities to do that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
So great, great conversations.
It was, it was fun work to be doing together.
Thanks, you guys. Andrea and Laura, engaged and inspired learners.
Yes, whoever wants to go, I don't mind.
All right, you can go first, and I'll follow up.
Oh, okay, certainly. One resonating theme that came up was equity from my notes with regards to community involvement, inspiring the students to strive harder and whatnot. There was some remarks about listening to the community more. The other takeaway was AP classes came up, striving to have access to all and not be based on tests to get into the AP courses. Also, one part was having, building trust with kids through various staff members who the kids could turn to, to just have a trust factor, and that these staff members get trained to recognize when to intervene, not to intervene, bring it forward. Let's see, I'm trying to read my writing, because that was a challenge, but the other item that came up was, this came from student engagements, was there English, still reading books that many of us read forty years ago when we, when we were experiencing high school, and they wanted to have more of a choice on what to read, having the same themes, but having the choice and not be reading, in essence, what parents and everybody else read forty years ago. Feel free, Laura.
Sure. We also talked about, jumping off of that point, having not just a choice in books, but having required books that come from different backgrounds rather than just old white guys writing about something that happened a hundred years ago. Is having like a diverse, like, women, people of color, authors who aren't just, you know, filling the mold. We also talked a lot about ELL students and how hard it can be for them to sometimes be involved in, in the community and be really engaged in their classrooms when they have, you know, a language barrier. And I was hearing a lot about a social barrier that those students also have, when it's, it's hard to enter the classroom and make friends with people when you're excluded from, I think, a lot of community events and just, you have that separation with other students in the school. We heard a lot about learning disabilities and how hard that can be for some students to really engage and having it be hard to ask questions in the classroom. And I think that kind of ties into the whole, when you have a better relationship with your teacher, it's easier to ask questions, it's easier to get involved in and out of class, and that was something that came up a lot, too.
Also dwelling into that subject matter, there were some expressions of concerns whether their children would be successful when they're receiving extra help if needed. And I think there's a question at times that arises whether they will be successful or not through the, what's being offered. And I ventured forth and talked about my experience, and there is that segment, that one will be successful, but that has to be built upon and continue to demonstrate success and to continue to engage, and if it's not working this direction, then you shift to a direction that can work. And I think that's what I heard was to be agile and recognize what can or can't work.
Be flexible.
Let's see, there's...
We had a few people, not many, but a few people talk about the struggles of mental health. And like Diane was saying earlier, you know, some kids take the day off when, you know, when it's a little overwhelming, and I think that's really important to address, that it's hard to sit in a classroom, like, go to, go to classes when, when you're dealing with something that, that you might not know how to bring up, especially to a school guidance counselor. And I think that was something that we didn't hear from a lot of people, but the few that did bring it up definitely had big issues, you know, to talk about.
I think those were major takeaways.
Thanks, guys. And then the last, Diane and Brendan?
For social-emotional learning?
I'll tee it up and then you can.
Go ahead.
So we had social-emotional learning, and the two questions that we centered our conversations around were students feel safe coming to school and believe that their teachers care about them, and that students from specific subgroups are treated differently than others when they misbehave.
Okay. So Brendan did a great job of gathering the themes in sentences. So we have disparity about attentiveness to SEL and K eight versus high school with the more positive experiences in younger grades. Next one is inconsistency among staff on modeling behavior that is supportive and caring. If I get into some data here, it, it wasn't good. It was, eight were modeling negative behaviors and, four of them were modeling positive behaviors. Not giving me the warm fuzzies. The feedback we received is that bullying students with learning disabilities is acceptable in our district. That's concerning. There is a need to focus on prevention as opposed to intervention, and there is hope that new resources being brought in at younger grades will help. The number of, it, I'm going to give Liz the numbers of what we got, but it was really, it's really discouraging on one hand to hear that those negative behaviors we all don't want are happening and encouraged. On the other hand, we have people who are saying, well, there's an attitude of love and there is being caring shown, okay, but the very time that there's caring not being shown in the same populations, both at the younger K eight and at the older high school level. That resources are needed, that, on the other hand, we have people being able to work in crisis. So it's, it's, wow, would you say it's fifty-fifty on, on positive, negative? It was...
Yeah, I think that's why we chose the word sort of inconsistent, you know, because some people had really great things to say about their high school experience.
Yeah.
Other people had questions about whether advisory was achieving its stated goal, you know, that kind of thing. There was specifically called out were the administrators of the high school for being able to deal with students who are in crisis and also for making students feel welcome. I think it was more of the teachers, that there was a little bit of a concern or a gap.
Gap. So in the, you know, is it a board concern? Is it administrative attention needed? I would say it's definitely administrative attention because it's faculty on staff, interactions with children. It didn't really sound like it was that much of a parent concern. I would say we, the board should be concerned because the policy isn't being enforced.
Well, I would just like to make a comment on the one that says, can you read the bullying being accepted? Can you read that comment again, just so I have it clear in my head to know how to make a comment?
The feedback we received is that bullying students with learning disabilities is acceptable in our district and culture.
I guess that's what I'm going to say, is that could be a perception of some. I can say as a superintendent, it is not okay. I do know that our directors of student services would say, it's not okay. And I also agree that our principals, maybe it's times it hasn't been brought forth. So I just, I just want to be clear that that is a perception. It is not okay. We don't consider any bullying okay. So I just want, I just, well, we have the camera. It was said. I just want to be clear that it's not acceptable.
Yeah, no, no, I think that we all agree that it's not, that's not the ideal.
Yeah.
The experience that we heard from the groups that rotated through was that that theme kept coming up, that the person, that the perception.
Yes.
Is not meeting what our intention is.
Right, right. I also think it would be real, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Beth.
I think it would be really interesting when we get the student data to compare to this and see the themes through that. I think that'll be really interesting, the same statements.
So I had a comment that kind of addressed that same issue, that we had some overlapping comments that came up when it came to access for students with disabilities, but I was wondering about your division of things as more challenging at nine through twelve and less at K through eight, because what we were hearing was that the divide was more around sixth grade, that middle level was where some of these incidents of harassment of people with disabilities that were not corrected by present adults was where that was observed.
We, yeah, I don't think we're able to sort of identify that. I think that what, what we heard was, in terms of the age breakout, it was more about the question of, do students feel safe coming to school? And universally, the K eight people who came to our table felt that that was a better experience than the K eight versus the high school, but we didn't specify the middle grades.
Okay. Well, that's, just speaking personally, that's great because seventh grade was the worst part of my life. If other people today are feeling the same.
Did we have K eight students represented?
I think we had two high school students.
We had high school students.
We had a couple of middle schoolers from West Virginia.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Was that it? Before Pat had something, are you, are you, okay, Pat, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, I mean, it is, it is happening, or at least the perception is there that it's happening as low as third grade. My daughter has mentioned that when bullying happens or teasing happens, that it is with children with disabilities. And, you know, we had a big talk about bullying and teasing and stuff.
See something, say something.
Yep. I'm like, you know, it doesn't happen to me, but it does happen to, you know, this student. I'm like, why aren't you saying something? So, I mean, I don't want to need to go into the conversation, but it's definitely happening at multiple levels.
I think surfacing that is important. There's national data associated with students who are experiencing disabilities and higher rates of bullying, and the conversation is a valid one to be having. And I concur with Beth, it's not okay, and I think we would all say that same thing. And where that perception starts to surface, it's important to have the conversation.
Absolutely.
Sandra, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you, I would love to hear if you have any comments. Please don't feel like you have to, but you, I know you were there for the night and participated in all of our tables, and if you have anything that you'd like to say, did what you heard sound, from the board tonight, sound like what you felt at the tables? But if you don't, if you want to pass, please pass.
I will say something. So I think that there is bullying happening, but then when it's brought to some administrators at the principal level, I think it's being discredited, and what's happening is, is then it's not being reported out. And so the problem is when the report is finalized and they say, oh, no bullying happened, then it's not reported as bullying is happening, so then there isn't an actual representation of what is really happening within the district for the bullying issue.
Yeah.
For assessments, I, for that, as Al was saying, F and P data does, is more subjective, and it doesn't give a great analysis, like a norm-referenced scientific assessment, where you really could compare apples to apples within the whole district. So I think it's important for, for the board and administration to think of, you know, do what we have in place right now, is it sufficient to give us the information that we're looking for? And from my experience with my... And from my experience with my children, the F and P would have them way up here.
Okay.
And then so.
Beth was just saying what the F and P is for people who don't know. I just said it's Fontes and Penel.
So it, it didn't give a clear expectation when then evaluations were done. And then evaluation said kids, my kids were way down here, but F and P said they're a little bit behind.
Yeah.
F and P does not screen for dyslexia.
Right.
And it's not designed for that.
And it doesn't assess.
We're having conversations about phonemic awareness. We had a meeting today with the Stern Center. So we are digging into the, it and trying to figure out the data and what our teachers need as content. It's a large priority and it's a priority because we said kids would read by the end of the third grade. So we are, we are having those meetings and we are holding people accountable. And we have principals looking for those instructional strategies that need to happen. We are on top of it. I can't say what's happened in the past, but I can say what we're doing now.
Got a question, um if I could.
Yeah.
With respect to the culture that, or premise of the culture being existent on bullying, I'd be curious as to how much reporting occurs from parents and staff members reporting on the bullying occurring versus actual student reporting of such.
We get both.
You do get both.
And as soon as uh it comes to administration, they have to do an investigation.
Right.
And then investigation tells them how much further they go into it.
But what is the percentage breakout? Uh that's what I really want.
I don't, I don't know that.
I think that's really what would be telling is to
I don't even know if we'd have.
Is it, is it equal? Is it more coming from the segment population, more from parents? Because if it's, if not, if it, other students are witnessing it and not reporting out on it, then I think that's maybe a lot of the issue is that there, I know if you see, you're conveying, see something, say something. But if that is not occurring, that may be part of the cultural issue it has to build into it that
Yep.
and it would dwelve into a community service, uh responsibility. So that, I'm wondering because
Well, we talked about it as a data point perhaps that comes next time around as a starting point for how that, I mean, we, we actually have a required policy on bullying, hazing and harassment, so and maybe it's an opportunity to provide in our board notes as well, the process, the procedure that lay behind that. Because I, recalling unfortunately, that it may not be that the reporting person for each building is identified in the student handbook. Like I just, those are things to check. I don't remember that the, because those are part of policy, but then also
Financial.
go into in, um in the student handbook. Somewhere you should be able to look and reference and know who the reporting person is at each building.
Yep.
I feel like, anyway, so I think you're right, Andre, and I think that we're identifying that as both an equity issue and a policy that we should be monitoring. And I think it's a data point that exists. So we can at least see whatever the most rote version of that data point is so that we can then formulate our next round of questions and ask that to be tracked if it's not currently being tracked.
Cause I'm not questioning, right, cause I, I wanna make it clear that I'm not questioning whether one is acting on it or not. And just looking more, where is the reporting of such coming from?
I don't know. I don't actually think it's tracked, but we definitely, like Kim just said, if we want, we could track that.
And if it is informs something. So like we could see what we have for initial rounded data that exists.
Yep.
See what those other questions are, see if they're curiosities, because they would be important for you guys to know, or relevant because they may be policy level things that we should be asking for, so. Brendan might be next? Thank you, and.
Al, is your point directly related to what we're just talking about?
Yes.
Cause I'm gonna go on a tangent, so you might wanna go.
I love that self-awareness.
I think in looking at the, the policy, I would ask the question, have we checked in to the fact that there is a consistent process for the investigation of bullying?
It's extensively outlined on our website. It's part of a, actually.
We have a training happen.
If the response, if the response is back to the parent, that we're not taking any action, I think if it's happening again, there's probably a reluctance to bring it forward again.
Hmm, I've seen some come back through.
That's why, that's why I ask, is everyone at the same page?
I, I know the policy is very explicit. I remember us working.
I don't have access to the procedure.
Right.
It's on the website.
And I think that one is prescribed as almost anything.
And it's, it's very detailed.
Procedure's probably ten pages.
I think Pat was first and then Brendan?
Um, okay. I, I may cut into it. I wanna channel Martha a little bit here because I feel like we're getting into a deep dive about bullying. But we're, our topic here is the community engagement and, you know, the summary on that. So, yeah, I worry about us, you know, cause obviously, you know, bullying is something that we all care deeply about, but I feel like we probably could stay here and talk about it for another forty minutes and maybe we should try to get ourselves back to the community engagement.
We're never leaving. Thank you, Patrick. Go on your tangent, Brendan.
You know, as we start to get in, more into data as a board and different kinds of data, I think it's really important for us to, as, as great as this engagement session was, I think it's important to, to remind ourselves that it was a very small group of people.
Yes.
And I think Erin said, used the word surface. Like I think these kinds of almost focus group experiences are good for surfacing things, but it's not sort of the end all be all of this is happening or that is happening or. So I think that as we start to really dig into data more and try to become more data informed, we has, have to remember that there's varying levels of quality uh in data and that different kinds of experiences from focus groups to surveys provide you with different information that you hope surfaces, the, the kind of issues and the questions that you need to be asking. But it's, it's not sort of the end all be all. So I just wanna be really careful that we remember that as we start to have more and more of these conversations.
I think that's a great point, Brendan. Thank you for bringing that up. And also specifically, it's a good segue into what I was gonna say to wrap up what we're talking about, which is that we need to remen- remember, we only had sixteen community members come to our uh engagement effort. We know that we are not reaching all of the voices that we need to reach to have a data set that tells us, yes, we can feel, we feel like we've heard. We, this was, as Brendan says, just one of the many strategies we need to use to hear these voices. And I don't want any of us to think that any one comment that we read on the sheet or that we're sharing with you tonight is the way it is. It, we need to understand it is just somebody's experience and that is extremely valuable to, to, to collect and for us to hear, but it's one, one person's experience. And the more we do these, the more we can collect them, to that Brendan's point, and the more that we can collect these pieces of information, the more we'll know. But that's really important to know that this May seventh engagement event really did only talk to ourselves and about sixteen community members. So we need to keep that in mind when we look at, at the data. So thank you all for that. Uh, I would love for you to collect, for you to give me, if you had handwritten notes, send them. If you have anything written down that's not on that spreadsheet, send that my way. We'll take that. Our communications team is meeting on Thursday morning. The agenda for that is to look at what's, what our, uh, look at the year of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year and kind of figure, be intentional about um our communication and engagement effort. So if you have suggestions, input from the conversation tonight or things as we were talking about that you think are things that the board really needs to pay attention to from the comments that you heard that night, send them my way. And on Thursday, we will spend some time in our small group processing that more and, and we will, we will take it from there.
And I wanna stand corrected, thank you, Liz. On I, on procedures under that, you can link to who the appropriate person is for each building. I think under policy, it's where it says, and there'll be a person for each building and then it's blank. So I apologize, it's there. If you click through under hazing, harassment and bullying, you will click through the procedures and come up with the designated person for each building. So I wanted to make sure people are aware of that. But thank you very much, Liz. And we are moving on to school, oh, no, the governance task team. That's you, Brendan, yeah? Will you, and our charge.
Just the charge.
The charge. And we want um the board to approve it. And it came to us all, is that something you can get to Brian? Thank you.
Yeah, so um I'll have more of an update about the committee's first meeting later, later in this meeting. But one of the outputs um was to spruce up uh the charge uh for review and approval by the board tonight. We left last meeting, if you remember, we, uh, last meeting, we sort of knew that there were some things we wanted to tweak with the actual charge, uh, but the board gave us approval to sort of get going. And so our first uh assignment was to bring this charge back to you uh for any sort of further comments, but hopefully approval, um so that we can just sort of formalize uh the charge that we've been given and the, the outcomes and expectations as well as the timeline. So I guess um I would entertain any questions that people have about the document?
So moved. Is there further discussion? Thank you, Todd.
I think it looks great.
Yep, good job.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Passes eight and a half to zero.
Yep.
Thank you for moving that along, Todd. And then the district budget vote timing. This issue came up around our challenge for participation and turnout regarding voting. And um Brian shared with us a document. I know Martha had put some thought to this. I'm wondering, Brian, if you wanna
This is Martha's document.
Oh, it is Martha's document?
Yeah.
So as I read through that, there are plenty of questions that lead us to consider this. And um some areas of this work that are outside of our domain with respect to the um potential unification of the town and the village. And that vote date, um everybody is in, in agreement. And I think that's what we wanted to hear from this board. Are we in agreement that this is something we are open to being part of the process with? And correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, cause I'm trying to channel Martha right now. Or Patrick, you can do that too. That we are wanting to have some consensus that this is a process that our board is interested in engaging with, being at the table for these conversations. And that we, the questions at the bottom, do we wanna move, move the budget vote to town meeting day? And what's the timeframe within which we'd like to make the change? So I don't even know if town meeting day is a target anymore because I think that is somewhat dependent on what the municipalities were to decide. I, I don't wanna reframe Martha's words, but I, as I think about the question, I think the question may be more, are we interested in moving to a single voting day for all substantial matters in our community? And if they were not moving the date for our municipalities, are we open to pursuing that process of moving it for us? Does that seem like a question? I don't think we're voting today, so Martha can fix my thoughts. Yeah, I think we are discussing. Did I get that right from the agenda planning?
Yeah. Ten minutes.
For ten minutes for our guideline, yeah.
Um, I kind of had a question for you.
Sure.
Because um, I mean, looking at this document, it seems like there's one reason to move it to town meeting day, which is like a few hundred more people voted on town meeting day, but still a tiny percentage. So to me, all the other reasons, like having more information would seem to be heavier for keeping it in April. Do you think there's any chance that the town and the village, which have had March and April dates unifying, would move their date to April? Or do they have reasons that the select board has to get its work done in March?
No, I think the, I mean, this has been brought up before and I think it's part of why I wanted to discuss it as well tonight is so that at least there's a general consensus that we're willing to kind of collapse them all to the same date. The town and the village are continuing to um talk about governance. And there's a few different models that we are potentially looking at. But I think ultimately that the recommendation is probably going to come across that we are going to try to vote for a unification, which would mean, you know, everything on that one meeting day with the possibility of, there's, there's some ideas about having a, a specific district for the village to handle some outstanding debts that the village exclusively has. It would be much smaller. It would no longer be kind of like a full, you know, village government per se. But that's not been decided yet. We probably won't know for sure, um, you know, what path we're taking on that until after the uh, the marketing uh group that we've hired does their surveys to sort of get a feel for, you know, the whole of the town, um, what it is that they wanna see. I will say that my feeling on it is that, you know, we're going to try to vote for twenty twenty to um merge or unify the town and the village together and bring the voting for the budgets to one single day. And if the school district is amenable to making that happen on the same day as well, then instead of us having these, you know, village votes five different times, you know, between Australian ballot and various meetings that they have to attend to, that we're all just going to see substantially improved voter turnout for, you know, all the votes that we do. You know, if we know that the school district is willing, um, you know, to explore that possibility on the select board, then it gives us more knowledge when we're planning how we go forward, that, you know, we're all kind of on the same page. The only thing I don't know, um, and this is where Martha, but you know, certainly Andre can fill me in, is that I'm not sure about Westford and the timing for what they do. Right, you know, I can speak to, I can speak to the town, but I, I, you know, I, I can't say anything about how Westford times their votes.
Oh, I, if I could, uh, question right now, is it the town, Essex Town meets and has the vote traditional town meeting day?
Yeah, Essex Town has votes on.
First Tuesday and Monday night, the previous Monday. Is informational.
The budget is voted at town meeting.
For, from the floor.
It can be adjusted.
They're not Australian ballot.
Yeah.
But at present, for the merger, we're talking a two-year window if it's to occur?
Uh, I mean, we would need to vote on twenty twenty, November twenty twenty is when we're shooting for a vote.
July one, twenty twenty one, something like that.
There's not a specific transition plan yet, so I can't say how many years they think it's going to take to put that into effect. So I mean, I, I just, I can't say it's too early in the process. The, the feel I think is that the, most of the composition of people who make up the boards right now think that town meeting, town meeting day to determine the budget is just no longer a tenable solution. There's just too few people who come to it and that it needs to become an Australian ballot people can go and vote on.
I guess what I was wondering is that at the present, if we could maybe pursue a greater commonality, such as where the greater vote would occur, which would be the first Tuesday in March, and then uh look at change when and if occurs. That's what I'm wondering, because this way would engage, cause the, uh, there's traditional voting that occurs Essex Town on the first Tuesday for elected officials, but your town budget is from the floor still.
Yeah, the night before.
Um, we have budget votes on the first Tuesday.
And is it Australian ballot?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Um, and as well as general election as well, correct. And then that way we could, we're always, evolutions always present. So if something should change, then maybe we can react to the change when it occurs.
I would say most likely if they were to merge, they would go to a town meeting day vote. I don't think they would go to April, given all the other town deadlines that towns need to work within. They're not gonna push it out, especially if you do it by ballot and then it's voted down, then you got your out another month. My hunch is it would stay, you know.
migrate towards, yeah.
When I, I attended a special meeting last night in Westford and I was discussing, that was the turnout for repealing a new ordinance that had been voted on was greater than what we had for the town meeting. Priorities.
Brendan, did I see you had a question or no, did I?
Yeah, it's not a comment. I mean, you know, my comment is that um as much as I, I mean, we're making an assumption that by, by having one date will, will lead to more engagement and participation.
I don't think it's just going to, I think it's going to take more than that, and I don't know who's responsible for that. If that, if sort of encouraging participation in your town and, and school government and decisions are, is something that we're charged with, that town's charged with, some greater organization is charged with, it just seems to me that moving the date could be helpful, but I don't think we should pretend like it's going to be some fantasy that's going to all of a sudden, yeah, a hundred percent turnout or anything.
Absolutely. I think the question at hand was maybe also to Andre's point and Todd's, does it make sense for us to wait until whether or not they unify, or what is the timeline? That's the second question. So I'm hearing consensus around the idea that we may want to have a single vote date.
Yeah.
I heard Keely's concern about moving it earlier and losing some aspect of information, but frankly, until the legislature closes, we really don't know the tax impact, and that changed this year again.
Yes.
So, so I guess a question to Brian, maybe, and I know you all, or they all, whoever was doing it, used to do it for Westford, it was done, and most schools do it for the March date. So I would presume that would simply back up our budgeting timeline, but, and we might have less clarity around tax implications, but I don't know how often we can have less clarity.
I mean, I, when asked by Martha, I said that, that we, there was no reason to be opposed to the idea.
Okay.
I think we, I think we do, I think there's some consequences. I mean, we, we start a school year on the 28th of, of August.
Right.
We'll be budgeting at the beginning of October, so, you know, you're not, you're not working with the best data, and we do work with a lot of open-ended questions with, as far as head funding and requirements. I mean, the, in 173 was about to start until it was delayed, the chart of accounts was about to start until it was delayed.
Yeah.
The yield changed, last year it changed on the 29th of June, and some of those are big parts of when you want to communicate to the public.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I think while March and the second Tuesday is, is great and may have worked for quite some time, you know, and I understand the 30 days if it gets voted down, but, you know, in budgeting, the idea of like, creating a budget with a month of actuals, six months before you begin to spend back on it is, you know, it's pretty...
Problematic.
Very municipal. I'm not sure if it's very contemporary.
It may lend itself to our multi-year planning idea, or, you know, not that we don't do it, but it is, I totally hear all of that, and I think we have been fortunate to have that little extra time while we almost watch what's happening around us.
Yeah.
Not that we're not focused on our needs and our investments in our district, but we also have environmental information that helps inform our process in communicating with our community members. That being said, probably 90%, if not more, of districts vote on town meeting day, so...
Yep.
Yep.
As we're thinking about migrating and where we're migrating to, and to Todd's point, it's unlikely it's April, so how long do we want to wait? So the, the second question is timeline. Diane?
Well, it's timeline. Martha and I had a discussion, of course, dealing a lot with voting. I mean, if you really want to get historical Essex Junction Independent School District, use the vote. I'm behind on schedule. Use the vote in May. Use the vote in May, okay? You know, it was tight, you could do your 30 days, and have your budget by July 1st by, by state requirement. But you had very good data, by the way, in, in May, which you didn't have in March. Remember talking to Martha way back when, about Westford data versus EJ. But the operative part here is, if we want to participate, we will have to ask our voters if they are agreeable with this, okay? And that would have to be at our next annual meeting, because it will have to take another year to activate. So we'd ask them, and then we could activate. So in that...
Our timeline would be 2021 anyway, FY 2021?
Right. It would be in conjunction with the Essex discussion.
Okay.
If we acted at our annual meeting next year, which would be in 2020...
Yep.
Okay, it would take us another year to actually activate that.
We could then vote the following 21 March.
One in March, okay, but we have to have to...
So bearing that timeline in mind, are we hearing that we might have an interest in, unless we hear information to the contrary from municipal work, that we might be targeting the earliest convenience of moving, earliest opportunity to move the vote to March?
Right.
Am I hearing that? Or, or at least, I don't think we're voting on this right now, anyway.
No, no.
I think we were supposed to talk about it, and I ran way over the talking part of it.
Yeah, my, okay, my, my question to Martha was, you know, when she was posing this, because yes, I've heard those comments in Westford, and that, from the clerk up there, saying, you know, people aren't accustomed to. I wish I had my, my big huge, you know, aircraft carrier of a laptop with me, because I, I, I wish I got a spreadsheet, you know, and to answer that question.
Yeah.
You know, have we, what's our responsibility, what we, little we did, okay, did it have any effect?
Yeah.
And I hate to say it, no. You know, my gut reaction is that people are people, and so far, we haven't enacted anything to get them into the voting booth or to fill out their absentee ballot.
Partners in crime on it, and maybe we can give the Doug classes a project.
Well, we need a lot of partners in crime to, to get this motivated. It's not just us, it's our municipal brethren, too, to get more people out and, and active and participating. So it's, I hate to say it, but Westford's got a really good percentage turnout that Essex should envy.
We do, we do.
We do.
I do.
Essex, 8-3 is, is by far, got a high percentage. But, yes, they do. Anyhow, I will provide that to you. Natasha, Will, and I have been getting it back and trying to get some coordination issues, some reality and figures, but I think it's going to take, not just date changes, I think it's going to take some elbow grease on our part and our municipal brethren to actually get people out and to vote their conscience.
Agreed. Thank you. I think we beat this one, so, but I'm glad we had the discussion, and I am glad that we had Martha's work to guide it for us, and so if there's an action to be taken, that is, I think, for another meeting, and we can figure out whether that requires action or just a conversation and consensus and feedback to make sure that we're kept in the loop on the body of work happening at municipal level.
Was Martha's document sent out? This is the first time I'm seeing it.
It is in our board, big mailboxy thing, or...
Board site.
It's on the board site?
Martha may have sent it earlier.
I think she sent it, yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was Brian, simply because I think Brian put it in the board folder. So we are trying to set a date for the August special board meeting retreat, and five people responded. But those of us who responded, really, like, August 29th, that was, everybody that responded was available on August 29th. I don't think Beth turned off the doodle, I'm wondering if we are able to say tonight whether or not that date can work for all of us who are here. It worked for Martha.
Is that during the school year?
It, school year will have started.
Started.
Started. Could we start at eight o'clock in the morning?
We could consider the timing of that. I don't know to what extent that makes that differently available for people, because I, did we have a one to seven?
We have a one to seven.
Because having school dismissal right in the middle is, like, not super useful to those of us...
You would prefer in the day?
Yeah.
No, it's a Thursday.
Either in the day or in the night.
Yeah.
Not in both.
We're meeting, it's all about the same.
Then, do, can we maybe do a show of hands? Can people make a daytime meeting on the 29th?
I can.
See what the week brings.
Oh, I guess I could do it on that day.
I can, yes, I can.
Something like eight to two.
Whenever, just...
Even nine to two.
Nine to day or nine to two or three, or whatever.
After school dismissal, but not across...
One to six hours, five to six hours.
So like, nine to three? Does that screw you up on the backend, or?
Well, dismissal's at 2:45.
Eight thirty to two thirty.
Eight thirty to two thirty.
Eight thirty to two thirty. Are you in Fleming?
Do something about this.
Eight thirty to two thirty could potentially, as likely as anything else for all of us sitting here.
There's buses, right?
And the only person not sitting here is Martha, and Martha, I think, has some, that date worked for her.
I can ask her, I'm texting her right now, I can ask her.
That date worked for her. Is she watching us? Hi, Martha.
She's not. I hope she's not.
I know.
I hope she's relaxing, but she said she might, but I'll ask her.
All right, so I think I'm hearing that we can do the 29th.
Yes.
And we're going to work on a timing that can work to avoid school drop-off pickup.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, because I saw lots of people saying, if I've got to leave early anyway, I can just take the day. Anyway, thank you all. All right, that is awesome, and was quick, and I'm turning it over to Beth for her superintendent's report and questions. I'm sorry.
That was really quick.
She's getting her notes. I'm trying to catch us up here.
I do have an additional piece that I'm going to share with you now. Sorry, it wasn't, it's short, so it's not like you had to mull over it. Oh, I think I just didn't do that right either. So we did get, I'll go over that additional point so you can, in, at the end.
There's more coming around.
I just thought the timing before school is out to get that information to you. So we are gathering, as you know, the feedback for the survey, and that has gone out. We did send, send a letter home, a note home to families sixth through 12th grade. We've had a few people refuse to take it, but overall, we have students taking it, which is exciting, and I put that wording of the letter in your, in the report. So, in supporting principals as instructional leaders, which is part of my goal with, with the whole vision piece of it, and equitable learning is, is part of that, is working with principals as instructional leaders. And some things that we've done towards that, we've adopted a leadership standards and a continuum rubric. The standards were created by the Center for Educational Leadership, or it's called SEL, and that's also the same place that I took my National Supervision of Principals Academy through, so that's been great work. We also went as district administrators, Erin, Dylan, Brian, and myself, and Deb for HR, we all went last week for two days to a workshop that was done by SEL, and actually the facilitator was my coach through that academy, which made a nice connection. It was probably one of the best things I have done as an office, central office administrators with a team, Erin shaking her head, too. It was, it was great, it was very tiring, because we did a lot of thinking in two days. It was great to have Brian and Deb there, and thinking about, so how do we hire for instructional leaders, and, you know, Brian's there thinking about budget and the supports that we put into it, and the PD for principals and all of that, and how does our system as central office leaders, how do we help to support them as principals? And the research is, they're the second most important thing to students, student achievement, so we really need to work with that and get them in classrooms more often, and it's also about them reading data and analyzing it and working with their staff, so it's the bigger picture of being an instructional leader, but not worrying about even a playground or a roof leak or whatever the major number of things that come across a principal's desk in a day. So we're trying to streamline that for them and really work with them around that. So, also, we're talking with Vermont's Superintendent's Academy about bringing a larger professional development here for instructional leaders, which would be across the state for principals and district office leaders, which isn't an academy, it's a 10-month academy, which would be amazing to do. And it's a lot about walkthroughs and what to look for with good, effective instruction. We all have an idea of what is effective instruction, but until you're all on that same page and agreeing to what it is, and it's changed over time, so it's good to get the latest, the most update, dated information. The social and emotional learning, another big part of my goals in looking at the Equity Framework is the standards, or the competencies, as Castle calls them. And so Dylan had worked with a group of stakeholders to, with, also, as the leadership team approved an action plan, which was great, and then, so we're all on the same page with that, and then, on the following day, Dylan worked with a group of stakeholders to look at competencies, and they agreed to adopt the Castle, which has a ton of resources, and as we said before, go on that website and check them out, it's phenomenal how much they have for schools and communities and families. Then the EWSD student outcomes under Goal Two, I've been working with the Continuous Improvement Plan. We will, the Continuous Improvement Plan, Plan and, oh, that's, the Goal Three is the fiscal, sorry. The Goal Three is, I mean, Goal Two then talks about the survey again, just to bring that into that. But the Goal Three with the fiscally responsible, so tomorrow, we'll be working with the leadership team and taking our Continuous Improvement Plan and mapping out the next three years. That's not usually done with a Continuous Improvement Plan, it's usually year to year, but we're really feeling this need, we need to, we need to look three years out and then work backwards, and that'll help with budgeting and all the other things. And also, just keep us, there's so many initiatives out there with education, and new ones come along all the time, and sometimes you just have to put your blinders on and stay the course, right? And, and help teachers, too. I mean, even today, we had the discussion, and with K3 principals thinking about reading instruction, and it's like, yes, it's another initiative, but it's good, but how do you then do that so that everybody's bought into it and it's in a meaningful way? So, and that's always tricky as administrators to, to get that buy-in and on board, so. That Continuous Improvement Plan has to match our consolidated federal grant. So I explained what each of those titles were, for those that might not know what those titles mean, and then I've been working with Amy right now, and, and in her transition, to think about what's that needed, but our three-year plan will definitely help even more so with that. So that's that. Any questions about that part so far? Before I go to other updates? I didn't put it in here, but the other, I did talk about the current teacher supervision and evaluation, but we have had, for the one that we're developing for, to begin next year or in the fall, we've had through two meetings, and our third one is tomorrow to bring teachers back in. We met with teachers and administrators, although we didn't have great teacher turnout, and then we will meet with, and then administrators met, refine it, and then we'll bring it back to teachers tomorrow. I'm not sure the turnout that we'll get, but then we will, we're talking about putting a survey out and other things to try to get their feedback, to get more input from teachers, has not gone to the full administration team yet, but, so it's still in the works. So the current teacher supervision and evaluation system, I'm sorry that I left Westford off, it was a total oops mistake, it's not, wasn't meant, meant at all. So I did put the different performance rubrics for the former CCSU, and how they write their performance goals, and then the different evaluation cycles, and what I did for you is to give you the percentages of teachers in each of those cycles. And then the former town schools, I did the same thing, there, you can see that they're very different in both approaches, and that we, the one thing, the CCSU's information, the former CCSU information is all online, and it's very easy to go see. The former towns is not online, and that is, it's shared with me, with Google Docs and things, so we are moving to an all-online, so that we can get in and look at that, and I'm going to stop talking there if you have questions about it. I mean, I think the purpose of it was to give you numbers, to show you what the current looks like, and so that when you see the new, which is a, it's really a combination of these two, which ended up happening, it's more, the newer one, the new one is about principals being in classrooms much more than this, than the current one. Do you want to call?
No, actually, I'd much rather, since you're leading this part of the conversation, if that's okay.
It was really illustrative to see how incredibly different these two systems are, and that there is a lot of good to take from each, so I'm glad to hear. The thing that I thought was most interesting about the Essex Town one was that system of many observations. On the other hand, like, having the only distinguishing factor being like, are they... On the other hand, like having the only distinguishing factor being like, are they new to the district within three years? Doesn't make any sense to me as somebody who has worked in a classroom. Like, you don't suddenly stop needing to learn after three years. So, um, I'm glad to hear that you're like picking the best of both and I'll be interested to see the.
Yeah, it's the people that are working on it. We're really excited about it. Um, I think it'll give more information. I mean, all the research that we've read through it is the day-to-day instruction is what's most meaningful, right? So we have to get our instructional leaders, our principals and supervisors in the classrooms to see that day-to-day. Not that they're going to be in there every single day watching Laura learn, but as they get a snippet of many different lessons within a teacher's year. Diane?
So when, when is the goal to have this new evaluation?
The new to start in the fall. Yep.
In other words, starting August.
Yep. Brendan?
Uh, I should know the answer to this question, but, um, does this have implications for the contract with teachers?
So it does go through the union first. Um, and I do have a meeting next week with, uh, new co-presidents, which I am going to show the draft where we're at right now and I have been updating. They have to approve it. It's not necessarily, or they have to be shown it, not necessarily approve it. It's shown.
And do you feel like the low, um, teacher participation is because they defer to the union reps to sort of be their eyes and ears on this kind of thing? Or is there just a lack of overall engagement?
I think it's the time of year.
Yeah, it's busy.
Right. And when we, as I've told you, when we were going to do it, then we were trying to recruit 30 teachers to do IFR and it just was, we were trying to do too much, um, so it did get put out. But that doesn't, I, we will gather feedback throughout next year. So it's not like they won't have any input, you know? And I think that might cause more interest as we go through it.
Through it, they'll still.
Right.
And is it, I mean, I don't, I don't know how these things are in practice. I mean, is this, uh, the teacher's approach evaluation as a high stakes, um, experience? Or is it more of, uh, uh, we want, you know, help, help improve your practice kind of?
Yes and yes. So I think that our new system is, will be called the growth model. When you are placed on a summative or a more, um, administrative consultant, then it's high stakes.
I see.
If you're in the formative and you're writing goals and you're working on it and you've done your rubric at any time, I should say that because any time throughout these, if you were not performing, you can be moved into the admin consultant. And our, our new one has that, our draft new one has that same kind of, you can quickly get moved into a, um, improvement plan.
Okay.
Which you need, we need.
Yep.
Yep.
One of the concerns is that the administrative, the principal, uh, evaluation form, uh, should, one of my concerns has been that that should be done first. And then second, all staff should be given the, uh, the new form so that they can start familiarizing themselves
Oh, right, right.
with the, the new requirements of how it would work.
Right. So I'm really excited and probably Erin and Brian are, heard this a lot in the last couple of days when we were together. But when you do a new, um, supervision and evaluation, it's a great time for principals, administrators to get to know what that's asking teachers to do. And we can get aligned with instructional practices and what that looks like. I mean, our hopes are that we're doing walkthroughs in each other's schools and principals are going from school to school to see other teachers. And what that does, yeah, to calibrate, and what that does, when that happens in a system, everybody steps up to perform.
And then at some point, we need a staff survey.
Yes.
Opinion survey.
Yep. That should happen next year when we're in our first.
Right.
And then continue it too.
And you'll have feedback.
Right. Yep. Kim?
I also heard Al ask about the status of like principal evaluations.
Yep. So they're in the same process right now. They've adopted the standards and a rubric. Interesting enough, I had a conversation with the Center for Ed Leadership about their principal one. Their teacher one has gone through a ton of, um, research and all that it's supposed to, calibrations. There's videos to calibrate. There's a lot of work around that. The principal one was designed as a growth model also, and they haven't done as much work, but I offered that we could help them, figured we'd get something from it and good advice and coaching. But we're adopting from the same, um, Center for Ed Leadership, the principal standards and their four major standards. Um, I think I sent them to you and then the rubric for that. And it's in the, about the same place as the teacher one. So that'll get started in the fall too.
Happen in the fall as well. Okay.
I've had more conversations with the principals than the teachers, actually.
Worked with the principals to crosswalk that back to the Vermont standards so that there isn't gaps or holes in some of the requirement for their licensure.
Yeah. I think it's really important to have that information out there and the earlier the better.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, it drives the whole organization
Right.
in the, in the right direction.
Yeah, it, also having similar standards or ones that are aligned for the principals as the teachers will definitely align what we're asking to do. And we're even in having conversations when we should align what the, um, the whole model looks like. And I can do similar to what a principal does for the teachers. I can be doing that in my walkthroughs as following a principal around for X a number of minutes.
It's also, all, all these resources, while they're coming from that valuable resource of the CEL, the CEL's primary mission is to eliminate any kind of gap and is, is really fundamentally based in equity, which feels like it continues to have this ever-present of how we're balancing, how we're balancing multiple initiatives, but trying to have them be sequential to, to get more speed. It's sort of, so that's the, it's the real positive or power in what we're looking at. And not re, not taking, uh, two years to invent a tool that's unique to us, that doesn't have any collateral resources already built and ready to go, that's been validated and tested.
Yes.
I was wondering, so the principal one is also a model of observation presumably by you?
Yes.
Is it impacted in any way by stuff like the climate surveys?
You know, we haven't looked at that yet. And there's also, you know, I have had conversations about doing 360s too. Not doing a 360 every year doesn't give you a lot of information, but every couple of years, 360 is good. So those are things that we need to think about, but I got to get the standards and the rubrics and the model first. But gathering other kinds of feedback is really important. Yep, I'll check.
This is actually less about, uh, the, uh, evaluation process, but since we're at superintendent's report, um, I figured it was a good time to bring it up. With Amy Cole's resignation, um, do we, do you have a plan going forward for that? Are you going to, thinking about, uh, advertising and hiring? Are you thinking about promoting from within? I'm just wondering because it's such a valuable position.
I had to get your approval first. I have a hiring, um, charge. We have a small committee for this one because it'll be an interim. It's not a good time of year to go out and I think I wrote that in an email when I gave you the heads up that she was retiring. I didn't want you to hear that someplace else. So an interim is a good time, it's a good time of year to hire that. And then we'll put lots of energy in, I'd like to hire for the permanent position beginning like in November. Like really get out early to, um, get some good candidates. We have great candidates right now though. I'm excited. And we have a hiring committee that will meet Friday morning too. They have access to the applications now. They can see them all. I didn't, I didn't weed out. They can see them all. We'll meet on, um, Friday. We'll interview next week and then put someone in place by June 20th.
Wow, that's ambitious.
I know. That's what Brian told me. That's why I was smiling. Just do it, right Erin? Brendan?
Is this an opportunity to, um, to reimagine the position in any way?
So that's one thing that we're, um, all excited about. And, and Amy would have adjusted too, as we rethink about it. Like we, we've thought about Erin's position and Dylan's position, but it is an opportunity to do that. And we even discussed that a lot as the four of us were away in our last, um, in our workshop, thinking about what is it that we need? Like curriculum, instruction and assessment, yes, somebody has to do that, but that could be a part of, you know, or we could all take pieces of some of that traditional curriculum person. Like we talked about, is it somebody that works with me to work with the principals and get that kind of training that I just had? You know, so there's, and we want to stay under that equity frame. So I've thought a lot about, is it the director of teaching and learning to open it more than how it sounds with curriculum and learning to, you know? So we will spend some time, that's exciting too.
Yeah.
I always think about change. There's lots of opportunities. So that's, um, it'll, that'll be a good, good question, Patrick.
I have a question or I'm going to channel Grace maybe. Is there consideration or opportunity for like student course evaluations? I know student athletes evaluate coaches at the end of every season.
We're talking about that with the committee. That is a piece of it. Um, yep.
And, you know, knowing in, in negotiations hat that there are, you know, it wouldn't, it would be for teacher enrichment. Formative, thank you. And I get this wrong. So, um, I guess it's something, I don't know Laura, if you have any thoughts on that, but I know it's something Grace has talked about before as well.
Yeah, definitely. Um, she hasn't talked to me personally about it a lot, but I definitely, um, I would love to, to email her about it and, and talk more because I really don't, like, that's totally her thing. I, so.
Yeah.
We would like it to become formative so that for the teacher, it's useful information. And they can even collect that over time and look for themes or this hasn't changed. Ooh, I was really going to work on this and write a goal. That's right.
It can impact the coming semester for students or. And I think one of the sentiments that I, I don't even want to ascribe it necessarily to Grace, but there's any number of kids who come in and out of my house at any time that the reflection or sentiment was, think how many times we're assessed in a week? And we can't provide some feedback on our experience?
Yep.
So, um, I think it lends itself to student voice, that it lends itself to enhancements in the experience. Or as, if I were thinking about it as a manager or a teacher, I'd be curious to know how it's received.
Yeah.
That my efforts are being received and so I think it's a growth tool.
Not to look at just the nine 12.
Yeah.
I think it would be really important.
Absolutely. It's a growth tool. I remember our preschool did it, four students and families. So anyway, I just know what happens in pockets.
Feedback. Yeah, it's a culture of feedback.
Exactly. I love that idea.
Keely?
As long as we're also aware of the equity issues involved. Because like colleges have put more and more emphasis in evaluating professors based on student evaluations. And there are strong trends that like expectations that female professors should be accessible and care about your personal life are much higher than the expectations for male professors who can get rated highly. They're like, I have one office hour a week.
Barely walking in, come for an hour.
We want to be sure that, like, we understand that there's going to be.
It's a data point, right.
It's a data point for the teacher. It's feedback.
Yeah, it's feedback. Yeah.
I just had two other additional information that I gave you because I didn't want you to hear like on the streets. I had to, through the voluntary transfer policy, we have, um, 48 families. There's like 60 children that are really accessing that transfer. And it's mostly due to someone lives in the town and they moved to the junction or vice versa. And they want to stay in the town or they want to stay in that, um, school district or school. But I have had to deny three, so I just wanted to give that to you because of numbers. And one was a K student, but I have let all three families know that numbers change and we can try it again. And they're on a list if numbers do change. We have big classes from fifth grade going into ADL and sixth grade. So I didn't, um, we decided those went out and just said, not right now, but I will be back in touch or you can come back to me, but just because of numbers. So I didn't want that to get people to complain to you and we have a policy and we're not following. Because we are. I followed it exactly. Um, and then the kindergarten, we do have high numbers across the district. We are adding a class to Summit. There is a third grade teacher. We had an opening. We took the third grade teacher and Suzanne hired a kindergarten teacher instead of a third grade teacher. So then for next year to see Summit is the, is the building that had a room to do that. So she will have four classes of K and Hiawatha will have three. And all, we thought we were going to have to add one in Essex Elementary also, but it's evened out okay. Where, where the numbers are about 15, 16, 17 throughout. Yep, Brendan, but we get more.
What is the status of kindergarten in Westford?
That is, we have one teacher and it will be one teacher. That one, we, we're thinking it will be a class about 20 with a parent educator.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We have big numbers in K. I didn't put that in here because it wasn't a, the addition or subtraction to it. Yeah.
Kick it, boy. That's good.
It's wonderful. And that's what I told about a month ago, the principals were thinking, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? I mean, we were even thinking, what do we do at Hiawatha? Do we get a trip? I mean, there's no space. So we were a little anxious at that time, but it's kind of calmed down and we're figuring it out. Yes, Brendan?
This is a little bit off topic, but just, um, something that's come up recently in conversation, mostly due to the, um, amount of development that's happening in Essex. I've received a couple of questions or comments about like, boy, do the schools have a handle on, you know, whether or not this could mean a huge influx of new students across all grade levels? If we're going to have tons new, of new, um, housing and apartments that are mostly being proposed at this point.
Yeah, we do get the awareness that they're happening, but it's hard to tell.
Yeah. And that was kind of my answer in the moment. Like, you know, we don't really know.
I think as, as part of the long-range facility plan and as we get that going, I think we will benefit from a professional demographer doing some. And I think our community might benefit from it. I mean, the problem is, is that our, our demographics aren't mirroring what some of the statewide numbers are. And even in county, we can have, we can have different numbers within the county. So I think that would be really valuable for us to take a look when we're looking at facilities. And I think it could be valuable to the community as well. You know, it's been, it's been a better part of eight years or so since the demographer did enrollment.
Right.
Because those people all sort of retired. So it was, I think it's just a great reset with our demographics.
Yeah, and just thinking about the fact that, you know, when you take the village and the town, you combine them, Essex is the second largest municipality in the state of Vermont. So you, just knowing that Chittingon County is likely to grow, um, that might have an impact on Essex.
Yeah. 251 units is permitted.
Yeah.
That's in the town or the village?
The village.
Speaking to the, to the same conversations that Brendan mentions, I think that we have some room to communicate because all of us sitting at the table feel like Pat, that serving incoming large class of kindergarteners with the teachers instead of, my daughter is in one of those second grade classes that is going to be served by fewer teachers next year. Right now she has 12 kids in her class because there's three second grades. Like that isn't even within the range of like ideal class size. It's too small. And we're not using our resources wisely if we have 12 kids in a classroom. Like, so running the numbers on the tax rates and stuff about how increased headcount helps us would be really useful to continue to communicate to the community.
Yeah.
I have one other question about your superintendent report. Is that okay? Which is about the run, hide and fight training. And in the notes, you mentioned that a community, that a forum is being planned. And I didn't know if you were, do you want to talk about that?
No, I just, I, I heard you talking about communications, getting together about planning it out. And I think we, we need to absolutely coordinate together.
Okay, so we'll just add that as one of the topics that might come up for us to be part of helping to plan.
Right. Thanks.
Um, task team updates? Right? No, oh, I'm sorry, Keely. Goal monitoring report.
I already dinged my number of allowable minutes talking tonight.
And thank you for doing it, Keely. And thank you for doing it, Keely.
Sorry, I wanna be able to see it. So I, um, Martha asked me a couple of weeks ago to, um, report on goal number six, which reads, "To hold the superintendent accountable for clear and consistent communication with the community about district issues." Um, I tried to model my report after all the good ones that have already come through. Um, I found interpretation to be a little bit tricky, because communication is part of basically everything that we do.
Right.
Um, so, the way I tried to articulate it was, compliance with this goal will be achieved when the board gives sufficient feedback to the superintendent to ensure that district communication meets community expectations in its topics, frequency, timeliness, types or media, and professionalism. Um, this goal evaluates district communication from the superintendent herself to the board and to the community, as well as from other public-facing district sources. The reason why I said the board and the community is because sometimes there's things that we are told about so that we like know enough to answer questions. Like, we've been informed about like employee issues that might be coming out in the press. And it isn't a message that goes out to the whole community, but it's because, you know, of something that the community may be bringing up. And, um, I said also responsiveness to queries from community members and the media, because that's one aspect of communication when the superintendent doesn't start the communication, but has to respond.
Yeah.
Um, and I excluded, um, engagement, because that's covered by goals four and eight, and transportation, because that's covering goal number ten. And as I sifted through all of our agendas and board notes and emails that we received and posts on the website, a huge proportion of that was about transportation, which is already covered by Brendan. Um, but looking at what we had, um, there were monthly superintendent reports, um, on the agenda for board meetings. Um, there were either brief updates or long presentations from members of the leadership team, and I tried to list all the ones that I could catalog from the agendas. Um, it's useful, I think, to go back over this, and I wish I had started this work at the beginning of the year, kind of cataloging all the useful information. Maybe we could do that at the board retreat as assigned topics. Because this was a lot of work to find all the things that we have been informed about by the superintendent and her leadership team. Which is useful to remember that some of them were not transportation. There were also email messages, um, to the board and, and I, I realized that I seem to have lost the line that said the webpage, because I don't have that either in email messages or in the one with social media that follows it. Um, so yeah, I need to go back and edit this to add the webpage, cause there was a lot of useful information there. Um, but yeah, social media and local media coverage where, um, you responded or were putting the board meetings on there. Um, then I tried to give a qualitative assessment of the frequency, timeliness, and professionalism aspects, um, which I would say the overall theme is that there was improvement, um, both in performance and in attempts to provide accountability. So we communicated more about our expectations, and the administration responded with clearer, more frequent, more timely, um, communication. Um, for example, in November, um, Beth and Ben began putting out the EWSD news monthly update, um, which contained useful information, and then the initiative that the communications committee had started at the beginning of the year to try to do a monthly update, we kinda canceled that because it was doing the same job, and the district was communicating enough. So, um, my assessment of compliance here would be that, um, the district is covering a wide range of topics of importance to the board and the community with an improving degree of timeliness and professionalism. Um, and that we as a board could make greater efforts to set expectations for the information format, content, and deadlines um, ahead of the meetings where we expect to see it. Because for instance, um, I, at least personally, thought that all the presentations by members of the executive leadership team have been incredibly informative and interesting, but the amount of time that we received the information before the meeting varied widely over the course of the year. So, if we tell you we wanna see a presentation beforehand, that would probably be useful information to the person giving the presentation. Um, and we can also, uh, assess the success of these efforts by surveying community members to see if they feel that they're receiving the types of information that they need, um, in the ways that they need it. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Keely.
Yeah, great job.
That's awesome, and Sarah, I love the suggestion for as we think about our goals, they should probably not exceed ten or eleven, cause the students do theirs together, and shouldn't have more goals than that, perhaps less. And that we, as we think about the schedule, maybe we do think about, yeah, I'd like to take this and that time of year is okay for me, and I'm gonna keep an eye on that over the years, so maybe Martha and, and Patrick and I can talk about that as we plan for the retreat. Uh, maybe that's an idea. Um, and I have one other that, um, I, it's probably something else that'll come to me, it won't matter. Um, but with your friendly amendment, do we act on these, or we just?
No.
Okay, we just, we, I will say, I appreciate, and I also appreciated your reflection on, like, looking back on this really lets us remember the full scope of the work versus the most current thing that just happened, or the thing that sucked most of the life out of us, or, where there was so much other that, I always find when I have to do these, they seem like they are intensive, and they're looking back on a whole bunch of stuff. But I'm glad that you could also enjoy the experience, if we can call it that, where you were, you know, had the opportunity to see it a little differently through a different lens, than maybe it has felt for all of us at different times over the course of the year. So, thank you so much for doing that. Good to go. Awesome. All right, so task team updates.
Um, we're meeting on Thursday, um, so please come if you're interested in, in our plan for the year. And the only other thing I'd like to add, um, the Voices group is, is still working, and we are in a little bit of a hole to see what happens with the Equity Grant, because there's so much overlap, and so, there are so many opportunities in the grant that Erin and, and everyone who helped Erin pu- put that together, which was a team of people. And our hope is that we will get the grant, and if we do get that grant, then we have a, um, we have a bunch of people and a strategy for figuring out how Voices gets woven into that work, so it's not distinct bodies of work, and that we're actually collaborating and moving this body of work forward. So we will keep you posted, obviously Erin will let you know about the grant, or we'll all hear about that at the same time. We do have a commitment from our Voices group, from the Steering Committee, that if we don't get the grant, the work can happen. We have ways that we can still do all, uh, a lot of the good, um, ideas that are in that grant. We just need to reconvene and figure out how we're gonna do that with the resources and the capacity that we have. Um, so if you haven't had a chance to read over that grant, it's, it, there's some really great things in it, and we will, and Voices will keep you posted as we move forward and, and whether, and what that role is gonna look like. Oh, and, and, and one other thing, the, um, the community part of the Voices that met at the Darkroom Gallery as a, and is working on taking all the themes that we had, uh, the community-related themes that are sort of outside of the district, that group is working. They met on Saturday after the multicultural potluck that took place on Saturday. Um, a group of about twelve people convened after that on Saturday night at seven o'clock, which is not a time I would ever have suggested to have a meeting, but who knew, who knew? They had a, a vibrant meeting, a bunch of people came, there's excitement and energy around moving that piece of work forward. Um, Erin is, is part of leading that, that, uh, piece of work, so, um, it's exciting that both of those pieces are still moving forward.
Governance?
Oh, yes. Uh, the governance, uh, task team had its first meeting on May thirtieth, and just as a reminder, the members of that team include Keely, Diane, Kim, myself, and also Beth. Um, Beth was unable to make our, our, our first meeting, so Martha, um, did a pretty good job representing.
Height difference.
So, uh, so anyway, we had a very good meeting, uh, we reviewed our charge, which you approved tonight. Um, we also took a moment to just kinda go around the table and talk about our sort of hopes and dreams of the work that we were about to engage in, and also just to get it on the table, and to just talk openly about some of our experiences with specific governance, um, so that we were just clear about like, well, I come to the table with a little bit of a bias about this, or. Um, so, um, we talked a lot about the fact that this work will involve a lot of research, uh, and we left with a lot of homework. So Keely is doing a survey of different govern- governance types that we might wanna consider. And then each of us also will be spending some awesome time watching videos of other boards, uh, to get an idea of how some other, um, either aspirational or inspirational boards, um, handle governance. So we'll be, um, using those videos as a way to sort of see it in action, rather than necessarily going to board meetings, which may be wrapping up for the summer. So, I think with our, our, um, our charge tonight being sort of formalized, uh, we are still on track with our timeline. Um, so that, so the timeline, just as a, a quick recap, um, oh, and of course I closed that document. Anyway, the timeline that you approved, we expect to meet, and that means that basically, basically, uh, this, this board will be entertaining a recommendation or a discussion about a governance model, uh, in the early fall.
Are the, are, is our, are our homework assignments in the minutes?
They are.
That was very hard for me to get out.
And actually, we, you don't have any homework.
I don't have to do that?
No, you can, I mean.
I wanna watch the videos.
You can, you can watch as many videos as you like, if you go, so we're keeping a, a, a document of research.
Okay.
So there's a document in the, that's shared with you on Google Drive that has links to articles that people have found interesting. And then also, we outline who is watching, um, which board's videos.
Okay.
Yes, oh, thank you, so yeah. So by, um, October, somewhere in the October, November timeframe, uh, this board, um, will, could, could act on a recommendation by the, the task team around governance.
And we'll have a more substantial update, I think, and perhaps, um, help shape maybe a portion of the retreat.
Okay, good.
Informed by the work. Anything else?
Unless the members of the committee wanna weigh in.
Oh, that's very good.
Nailed it. Um, all right, local and statewide updates, um, the session closed. Brian mentioned the couple of things that were delayed, um, a number of things, I guess. Uh, the, um, the special ed funding, which was one seventy-three, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, implementation was delayed on that. Um, the, uh, it's, what is the one with the, um, the accounting system, Brian? I don't remember which one that was, but.
The data management system?
Data man, so.
And the uniform chart of accounts had different dates, and they were earlier. Um, it was, it was, um, and what they've now done is align them to be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
How does that impact, a question I have for you, Brian, weren't we part of a pilot?
Yep.
For some, one of those things, I think, chart of accounts, right?
Um, we've been involved in the chart of accounts, um, but we were an early pilater of the e-finance. Um, and in discussion with the staff, uh, a few weeks ago, our departure from that pilot, because it just wasn't ready, is one of the things that prompted, um, the process.
It made it that much more obvious they were not ready, and, okay.
Uh, they're, you know, you can't, they don't, the chart's not finished yet.
Well, that would hardly.
There's school districts that have transacted payroll on the new software and on the new chart, and last Friday, the chart changed. So, um.
We know how changing charts when you're unifying is a challenge, so I can't imagine doing that once you've been actually operating for a while.
I'm a hundred percent behind the project.
Yeah.
And I think it's really wise to take the time to do it right.
Um, the other, um, there are a few other things of note, and I would point you also to the legislative report update from the V S B A, but, um, the lead, testing for lead in drinking water needs to happen by the December twenty twenty, right? Um, and the State Board of Ed, I think, will take up standards around ethic, ethnic and social equity studies. Um, the tobacco age will rise in the fall to twenty-one for purchasing and use. Um, and may have some impact in our experiences in the school. Um, uh, the Act forty-six deadlines, or deadlines were not extended, and, um, I think that those are the things that might touch us most closely, am I missing something? The tax rate went up a cent, uh, the impact of the yield will increase tax rate by a cent.
And our equalized pupil was delivered to be presumably final at this point in time, because the yield is based upon it. And our equalized pupils, the correction of the Essex, the additional forty-eight students that I spoke about during budgeting, those have been added. So, we're up about two percent or so, um, in, in that area, in that category. So that's gonna, our equalized pupils will offset what the yield just did.
Keely.
Um, being able to warn school board official elections.
So, that is not to expire until the following year, but the miscellaneous ed bill did not pass the things that, and it tanked for various reasons of things that were attached to it. The, um, and Martha would do this much better justice than I would, I'm sure. Things then were peeled off of that and went on to the budget bill, which delayed Act one seventy-three and the, the data management system. Um, I double-checked when that was happening, and I checked with Martha, and we checked with Dylan. We are still fine for next year, they are gonna need to get that figured out, um, as a permanent fix. And I think honestly, as Act forty-six was being challenged and potentially delayed, um, there, there are a number of things that need to clean that up that I think just, the entire fight was around whether or not it was gonna be delayed, not whether or not anything would be cleaned up, frankly. So I think now, that will probably be work for next year, and, um, I would expect that we'd see that done.
But it's not urgent.
It's not urgent, thankfully, we get one more year, and then it is very urgent. So, hopefully they take care of that, so we don't have a problem with that again. Any questions on any of that, that I may or may not be able to answer? Okay, then, um, I will say finally, I, I and many of us had the opportunity to attend the Celebration of Life for Ned Kirsch. And, um, it was beautifully done, it's a tragic situation for an incredibly impactful and inspiring educator in our state, and who's had reach well outside of our state, and has certainly had intimate reach and impact in our district. So, um, it was beautiful to see all those in attendance, and the many people who spoke, and the far corners from which they hailed, or in different parts of his life. So, um, I think it was a very fitting tribute. Um, and, um, I think it allowed for the opportunity for the broader community to celebrate him, and really demonstrate the support that I hope their family is feeling at this difficult time, so, um, I'm glad that we could be there, um, many of us. And, so, that, that was it, he, he was incredibly impactful and will be sorely missed. And it was a good opportunity to see just how broad that is. If you follow him on Twitter, you certainly knew the convers- good conversation starters that he would have. Hopefully there's folks to fill in as needed with support around family, which I believe, and people inspired by his work to fill in and step in around the educational leadership he provided, so. We shall see, so thank you. Um, so, I, this is the fun part, um, can we go around with the value appreciation or challenge that we, did, did I miss something else? Did I catch us up, almost? All right, or you all caught us up, thank you. Um, so, let's take a spin around the room, maybe, is it okay to start with Andre, and go that way? Um, with value appreciation or challenge from tonight?
Um, I pre- appreciate the reports that we had, and all the, um, participation, especially on the, uh, community forum that we held.
Great feedback.
Yeah, I appreciated the, uh, the community forum, uh, really uncovered a lot to think about. But I think the most important thing in tonight's meeting was that everyone was given ample time to fully discuss the impact of, of what that meant to each individual. time to fully discuss the impact of, of what that meant to each individual and just brought out a whole range of issues and how they interrelated. Now, this was a very valuable discussion, so that was appreciated. So, thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Liz. That was a well-labeled party of our work, but thanks, I'll go there.
Let's see, I appreciated our public to be heard tonight. I appreciated the Sandra's report and the time she took to share her experience and some recommendations and some, I appreciated that. And just to see the support of the teachers and that, and that push to feel like we're approachable in that way and that people will come and, and feel like maybe there's a place that they can be heard makes me feel encouraged.
I'm going to cheap mention two. I appreciate Kim's running of the meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Especially on short notice. And I really value the fact that much of this meeting involved a discussion about data. And to me, that really is, that feels like really good board work, even though it was a lot in one evening. But I really appreciate and value that conversation.
I appreciated the discussion we had prior to the start of the official meeting with Amy Cole. And that, that it's gotten us started on, on some more data collection and, and evaluation to, so I'm looking forward to that again.
Todd?
I was just challenged by the meeting.
Challenged by the meeting? Okay.
I was going to be different and say challenged, but.
No, that's a thing you can give us. If you wanted to elaborate, you could, Todd. I don't want to put you on the spot. Okay.
Challenged by the continuing effort when public to be heard does bring issues that are not on the agenda to the board, to think about how we can respond to those issues in future meetings or by directing them to the right people. Because it always feels anticlimactic that we're like, "Thanks," rather than getting into the same depth of discussion as everything else. But I just said more than you're supposed to say.
We're good, we're almost cut out. Go ahead, Todd.
I was challenged by the fact that I had an idea and a backup idea, and Brendan took both of them. So I was like, "All right, I'll come up with two ideas that I appreciate and value about this meeting." And then he literally took both of the ones that I had ideas about. So that's my challenge.
Challenge by Brendan.
Yes, challenged by Brendan.
Wait, is it a capture? Next time, Pat, this first. Do we get, I don't remember if we get to have Brian and Beth participate, but if you're willing, I'd love for you to.
Yeah, I, I value, I value some of our cycle of experimenting with workshopping before meetings, with this process, and also with driving towards clarity, because it's the same thing that we see in our classrooms and our teaching, is that we need to, need to clearly articulate what outcomes and expectations are so that people can be challenged in a growth mindset to achieve them.
I value the conversation on data. I do feel like I need to do something with it and bring clarity to it and maybe bring it back to you for some feedback. But I took a lot of notes.
I valued your patience with me stepping back into this briefly. And also appreciate the challenge that it is and Martha's work in this regard. So thank you all for your patience. Thank you, Martha, for your willingness. So.
And she can meet during the day on the 29th.
Great.
Thank you. And we picked a date, but that's another regular thing. We picked a date for the retreat, which will be August 29.
Moved time to accommodate.
And it looks like 8:30 to 2:30. Awesome. So thank you all very much. The next regular board meeting is June 25. That is different for us. I hope R T N has that. I'm sure they probably do. And those of you tuning in, join us on the 25th. And do we have a message to the community, our takeaways? What do, and I forget, is Keely doing this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Student performance data?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
What's that?
Final student report.
Not sure how much the governance study has been widely communicated. Maybe there's some value to.
Task team?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good to, I think, yeah, I think we hesitated on including it last time, so.
Yeah.
I think I ended up mentioning it.
What's that?
I think I ended up mentioning it.
Oh, you did, okay.
But I don't know in how much detail.
I don't know if there's a lot more to tell just yet. But anyway, if that seems to work, Keely, that makes sense.
I mean, we had a long discussion recapping the community engagement.
Yeah, I think that would be great for that to be captured and whatever extent themes can be grabbed, because I think those, you know, I guess basically Sandra, who is sitting here, got to hear, she was there in the engagement, she was here to hear us discuss it. So that would be awesome for the community that looks at our takeaways to maybe have a link to those themes. Or, I don't know what's ready in that regard here.
I could get it ready real quick.
That, that might be a good grab of the conversation if that works. Anything else? Do we, do you think we have it? That sounds good. I know, I don't actually have the work plan to look at right this second to say what's coming up. We know we've got student data reporting coming up in June. Do you remember, Beth, what else? Or are there other things that you would like for us to consider for a future agenda?
I have that pulled up before. Brian, do you have a map pulled up? Our, I knew it was data, but I don't know if I'll be able to find it. I'm not getting online.
Okay, I, data's going to be big. And we talked about the challenge to get that in a single agenda. So if you think of other things, let Martha know.
Yeah, it was singular. The whole meeting was around data and some end evaluation that you need to do with your superintendent.
Okay.
Oh, and that was moved to August, because there's not enough people here in June.
Okay, that's right. And I, we need an executive session around negotiations. And I, that's all I can think of at this point. We'll, if you think of other things, let Martha know. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Where's your gallows?
Meeting adjourned. Do I get to just declare it? So, meeting adjourned.